We're going.
All right, I'd like to call the village council regular meeting to order September 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I see that we have in-person Andy and Jamie. Participating remotely, we have Bob, so I need a motion. I guess first of all, I'll need to run the meeting.
Right.
If I can get a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Mayor Verda, Ben Verda, run the meeting.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Motion passes. Now I'm gonna need a motion to allow Councilmember Markleese to participate remotely.
I make a motion to allow Bob Markleese, Councilmember Markleese, to attend remotely.
All right, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. And I'm gonna need, also need a motion to allow Mayor Polino to participate remotely.
So moved.
Further discussion?
No.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
All right, so next up, we've got adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions, attractions, changes besides me?
I don't.
No? Okay. Bob, Joe?
I'm good. I'm fine.
Okay. Under unfinished business, I need a new, a number 10. I'm gonna present the-
You said new business?
Oh, business.
New, unfinished business.
Unfinished business, sorry.
Your phone?
Number 10, I'm gonna present the Park Trek and Greenway roundabout plans for discussion and consideration.
The roundabout?
Yep, the roundabout plans.
Where is that at, Kim?
It's gonna be number 10 under unfinished business.
Discussion and consideration of roundabout landscaping plans?
Yep.
Is that your only addition, Kim?
Yep.
Is there another pen in there?
Oh.
Hmm. I'll probably go with one more.
There's a Sharpie pen. You want a Sharpie pen?
She's grabbing one.
Okay. All right. There are no other changes. I need a, or additions, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Further discussion?
I'll count that as Bob.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Next up, we have a pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
May I may grab this?
No, we do not.
All right, great.
You can ask if anybody on there wants to speak.
Is anybody?
I don't think any of them are here to speak for public comments. They're here for Mike Proft, and he's, she's here for the public hearing.
Okay, so nobody virtually would like to speak for public comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, we have reports and updates. Administrator's report, Christina.
Good afternoon. I have a lot. First and foremost, want to welcome and introduce Jamie. I'm not even gonna try the last name, so if you wanna say your last name in just a second, I will.
Okay.
Let you do that. She will be officially appointed at our next work session. We'll go through the actual appointment, but she's actually the one that's taking Chris's spot, so she's here. She had a good first day, and she came back for the meeting, so we're happy she came back.
That's a bonus.
And I don't know if you wanna introduce yourself, or say a couple words, or at least tell them your last name.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Jamie Prabuznak. I, yeah, I had a great first day. Christina's right. I enjoyed meeting everybody, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. All right, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other items I have, let's see, Marvin Creek Roundabout. So passed out at your desk, there are some, an email has been sent to Travis Preslaw, and some documentation from our power bill submissions. Basically, in a nutshell, if you recall, the last couple of meetings ago, we had a citizen come to us requesting some improvements to be made to the roundabout at Marvin Creek, and we determined that we own two-thirds ownership of that roundabout, and DOT still controlled one-third. So at that moment in time, you all approved roughly a $10,000 contract to repair it, as we didn't have it in our assessment that was recently done by AMT. Well, we went to DOT to get an encroachment agreement to repair their little one-third portion, because it didn't make any sense to do half of the roundabout that needed to repair. And at that time, they told us that they owned and operated the entire roundabout. So we're still in discussions with them. We have submitted that section of roundabout in our power bill for the last-
Eight years.
Eight years. It's been accepted by the state. In the state's depiction of what they own and control, that little portion of the roundabout is missing. So they even said that they recognize that it's missing, but there's an error in their system, and someone forgot to put it in there. So we're still going back and forth with them. Just wanted to let you know that I've put the roundabout repair on top for now. I had notified the HOA president. I'm not really sure if he understands exactly what's going on, because he's new. But I did inform him and the older HOA president. They just transitioned out. So just wanted to let you know that that's going on, in case you hear anything, in case anyone's listening that's wondering why it hasn't been done.
So do we have any repercussions that we've been collecting power bill funds on that, and it's not ours?
No, I don't know. So I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I think we've used it and tried to use it, good faith, with repairs, and there seems to be an error, even DOT doesn't have it properly matched, so it's kinda hard to argue that we shouldn't include something that's not on DOT's map as theirs.
Okay.
And they, they've accepted the power bill maps, and it has all of that information in it for the last eight years, like I said. And so if there was an issue, it should've been brought to our attention before now.
So at one spot, they say it's ours, and at another spot, they say it's not.
No, in both spots, they say it's not theirs.
Yeah, but they said verbally in an email that, well, not verbally, but they said in the email that it's not ours.
But then how are we collecting power bill funds if they've said that it is ours?
We have no clue.
Okay.
So we've sent an email to them, and basically said, here's all the evidence that we have that says that it's ours. Please give me back what you have that's yours. And I haven't got a response to that.
Okay. All right, so we'll just hold tight. Okay.
Jocar, or Jocar Pedestrian Crosswalk. So as you know, the last several meetings, we've been talking about this, and having the crosswalk at Wheatfield, and then since then, the HOAs have kinda come together and said, we want three. We've went back and forth with them on cost sharing, and the direction that Council gave me at one of the last meetings was, we don't want you to come back to us unless you have a uniformed answer from them, consensus from all four HOAs. And so that's what I did. The HOAs come up with a plan that worked for them. However, Marvin Creek was somehow either not involved, or didn't just pay, I don't know why, but they weren't there. So then we had a conversation with Marvin Creek after the fact, and they need some more time to figure out fundraising efforts on their end. So I told them that I'm just gonna push the brakes on my end, I'm just gonna sit back and wait for them to approach us. So now, the ball's back into their court. Just wanted to let you know that we're not doing anything right now.
You said Marvin Creek?
Correct.
Good.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
And let's see, NCDOT road acceptance. So inside your agenda packets, you guys had advised, well, you had advised me at the last meeting to find the score, the rating of the road, and I did email Travis, and it was an 87. What was the score?
Christina, real quick, I didn't realize I was on mute, but if we back up a second, are we just eliminating the, that on the agenda for, is it gonna always show up in unfinished business, that crosswalk?
Unless you want it to be there.
Well, I mean, you can just give us an, I think, 'cause I don't want it to come back on us and say, well, we did nothing about it. We put it in their hands, and then, you know, if it's the only place on one of the unfinished business, most you can say, they haven't got together, and that, but I, we just, 'cause I don't want this necessarily to die out. I think this is a good thing to, to maybe do a co-op with, with the communities, but, you know, and I know we put it in their, on their shoulders, but are we just eliminating, it goes away if we don't hand back from them, or what's, what's the plan with that?
So we can make sure that it's in our action list, that we check out, and that we review every, you know, every meeting, so that it stays there, and it doesn't go away as ongoing. But I had made it clear to them that it's in their hands now, and we're not, you know, we're not doing anything until they come back to us. But we can keep it in the actions, so that y'all are reminded as well.
And it come back as unfinished business, and I assume so. Okay.
Well, not necessarily unfinished business, but we'll keep it inside the agenda checkoff that we go over at the end of the meeting, so that it's sitting there as an ongoing project.
That's right, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, like in the spreadsheet at the very end of the packet, add lot.
I get that. I'm just saying, you know, if it ever does come back, and then would come back on the agenda, in the unfinished business, I would like it's just gonna be on that.
Yes.
List. Okay.
Okay, so Newtown acceptance, okay. So, yeah, the rating of the score was, it looks like it's an 87.5 of Newtowns. I haven't asked Mike, you know, what standards would be acceptable or not, but Travis did advise me that this is not gonna be anywhere on the resurfacing list for several, several years, so if Council's willing to accept it, it's pretty much the condition that it's in now. This rating was taken in 2018, so it could've changed since then. We can obviously get our engineer to come out and four-sample it, and look into it further, but that was the rating as of 2018.
That's good, right?
87 is good.
Okay. I mean, I mean, I know that Joe wants to wait and see if we can, you know, use it as leverage to take over. They're just not gonna do it. If I'm voting today, I think we should go ahead and take it over now, dependent on some traffic enforcement stuff. With that being said, I mean, I mean, I'd like to pursue owning it, so that we can adjust speed limits and make it miserable for people to drive down Newtown Road.
Well, my only concern about that is the roundabout construction. Is that going to mess with that roundabout construction?
Nope. If you look on this page, it won't change anyway, because they've got the lead coming up Marvin Road that they're gonna do, and they've said that they will continue, they will still pay for it, and same amount of money that they would've paid for it before.
And we'll make sure all that's clearly stated. Y'all have to petition to begin the acceptance, and so once we do the petition, it'll then go to the state board, and that we can make sure that it's all in legal agreement.
Sorry, I'm not at the speed.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Well, here, here's where I'm uncomfortable with that, is, you know, because first of all, we don't even have a downtown district yet. We're, we're taking over a road just to, that 16,000 cars go on annually, and we're up for maintain. We have no source other than power bill funding to, and raising, potentially raising taxes to accommodate that thing. So we don't have, listen, once we get this downtown district going, then I can see, and it shouldn't be much work to get that to be converted over, but until that all happens, there's no reason to. I mean, we can, if you really wanna slow people down and stuff, and just, let's encourage our sheriff's officer to be on that street more than, than anywhere else. I think there's more, there's probably more concern in neighborhoods of speeding rather than on Newtown Road, but, and that's the opinion of one, so.
I do, I do wanna make it clear, too, that any, you know, divots that we get reported in the road, as far as like where the shoulder drops off, we would be responsible for maintaining those areas as well. And if we don't, there is a little bit of a liability from a negligence standpoint, if we don't address it, if we're aware of it.
Isn't that technically Marvin Road?
Well, there's one when you're leaving, like, the lake.
There's one right, right here on this side of Newtown, just before you approach Marvin Road, where people drive off all the time. DOT fixes it once every three or four years.
Never?
Yeah, I mean, it's like, nonexistent. From a safety standpoint, I don't think it's gonna, it's not a huge cost point standpoint, but I think from a safety standpoint, if we do take over the road, we can keep that maintained a little better than DOT, 'cause we can't touch it if DOT owns it, just like this tree issue.
Right.
And I think, from my personal point of view, that getting people accustomed to slowing down out here, as we construct the downtown district, will be a help, not only for the actual people being here constructing, and doing all of the upfitting, streetlights, curving, and whatever else we're gonna have to do, but also getting people used to going slower through our downtown district.
Well, not using it as a cut through, because what's happening?
Yeah, and that too, but, but just getting the general idea of slowing down, and being aware that this is in development.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's just my opinion on it.
My feeling is about it, that I've really given some thought and studied this, and I think in the big picture, listening to the three of you, but, you know, giving thought to what you said, Joe, and also to you, Kim, I think, in the big picture, at some point, we should have ownership of it. I think if the Heritage District were to come together, I think that us having control, more, you know, even speed limits, it changes everything. In the interim, given some thought, I, I looked at the road, as it is right now, especially in front of Melinda Daniels' home, there's these big ruts, I mean, that's drop-off of about eight inches. It's amazing that it's there, and it's continuing to happen. I don't know what kind of wheels are going in there, because it'll really mess up somebody's differential. So I would say, we're gonna take it over, those, those ruts need to be filled up, or some sort of an apron that goes along that, to keep, and as you're saying, Christina, any kind of damage. At this point, we've got police that are, the sheriffs are going to be there, they know they're there. I mean, it's kind of an automatic signal, just we're looking at the fat, an automatic signal to slow down. But then we're also talking about the turning aspect, you know, no left turn. So I'm thinking that the reason we would want it is control. That's really the big thing, is to control. But the idea is, do we need to control it right now? That, and, you know, do we need to go with that cost? That's, that's probably the biggest thing I feel, is, I'm not, I, I don't know if I'm in such a hurry to make it happen. I do want us to have control, especially in the big, big, big picture, that South Carolina were ever decided why in the four lane, whether that's an urban legend or not, we would have control back coming from the border. So I feel good about that. But at this point, right now, I don't know if there's that big of a sense of urgency. That's all. That, that's my opinion on it. I guess my question would be, what, to Robert's point, is what's, what's the rush of us taking it over? What's the advantage of us taking it over and having it on our umbrella of things to fix, when we don't have to take it over right now? I mean, 'cause if we don't have it, and in five years, something major goes wrong, we're, it's more responsible. But if we start this downtown district, and it takes time for the, the landowners that are involved, and we that are involved, to even get what we want to get accomplished in there, I don't, I don't know what the advantage is, is taking it over earlier than, okay, we'll revisit this, and if things go fast with the downtown district, we can revisit. What's the timeframe to take it over, Christina? Total timeframe?
So we, so we'll accept the petition, and then it goes to the state board, so probably two months.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying, so if we can, we can make this happen in two months, and I can assure you that DOT would like to think better than to just turn over roads that, that they don't have to worry about anymore, that you're, it's, and especially if they're not gonna improve that road, then why would we? I mean, the, the roundabouts are gonna naturally slow those areas down, and until we get that third roundabout, you're, you're gonna see probably faster speeds through there, so that's probably something we consider having, or ask our sheriff officers to monitor more. But I, I just don't see putting it under our umbrella, what the advantage is.
Well, okay, so we have to start this process at some, like, somewhere, right? If we're gonna do the Heritage District. We're, we're working towards, you know, the whole process. We're gonna hear stuff from Rowhead, and Emma's coming tonight, to kinda find out what, what that layout looks like. But we gotta start somewhere, and like Bob said, was that if South Carolina does wanna come in and make it four lanes, and they team up with NCDOT, then we're, they are not gonna let us take it over. So I would much rather go ahead and take it over sooner than later, so that we can control that, and start training people that it's not a cut through, don't come this way, and if you are, then go to the speed limit, because we're gonna have Mason and Tommy sitting out there with their new LiDAR guns, getting them. So, I, I mean, that's my, you know, I, I think we gotta start somewhere.
What do you think, Jamie? I haven't heard from you.
I was excited the first time I thought we think we could take it over. Because, again, with the exception of, we already have the answer on the, on the roundabout, that's gonna happen. The tree, I don't want any part of that. So as long as DOT takes care of the roundabout and the tree, we've got a pretty decent grade that we have right now.
I was gonna say, and it's an 87.5, that's pretty good.
And if we can, and if we can control it from that roundabout to-
State line.
To the state line, and run it at 25 mile an hour, you're gonna deter a lot of people from tearing up these roads, 'cause right now, they're tearing them up, and-
Right.
NCDOT aren't, they're not gonna do anything. For the next three or four years, they're not gonna touch a road for nothing.
Right.
If you have a pothole, they're gonna be like, well.
Go get some gravel, shove it in there.
So let me ask you this, one question, to your point, Christina. If we own the road, can we make it no trucks?
No trucks, no 18-wheeler?
So that, right there-
There you go.
Cut your wear in half, right out of the gate, boom. No tractor-trailers through here, which, by the way, are getting more numerous, cutting through, running from Indian Land to Waxall, because they're connecting with these businesses that are-
And tearing up our roundabouts.
And they're tearing up our roundabouts, and they're tearing up our other roads throughout the village, because they are going here, and then going up Waxall Marvin.
And it would be enforcement-based, so as Mason and Tommy call them, that would help, you know, that's how we would police that.
Yeah, but that, but if that, but limiting that, you know, saying no trucks, that, that greatly increases the longevity of the road, right out of the gate.
I was excited the first mention of it, so that's kinda my take on it. I know this is crazy, and this is not a popular question to ask. Where do the, we write a ticket out on Marvin Road. Do those, those-
It goes to the state.
It goes to the state?
It goes in the Department of Corrections pocket.
Okay, but it doesn't, none of that would come? All right, I know it's not a popular question, but I'm just-
We can do civil citations if it's our road, however, you know, we would have to internally collect that, so that's a question of-
No, no, I don't wanna do that. I'm just saying, we, we, we know it's a problem, and it's not a problem's gonna go away until we take control of it. And again, it's, so it's a timing issue. To everybody's point, all we're doing is, is freaking out the time to do it. Do we do it now, do we do it later? Because it's gonna happen one, one way or another. The only caveat to it is, is if the state just says, you know what, we're gonna partner with South Carolina, we're gonna make this four lane to right there, and then we're out of the ballgame. Then we're like, somebody's gonna say-
You guys talked about it, you talked a year ago.
You guys talked about you doing it. So that's my two cents worth on it. As long as they take it around about the tree, um-
Well, can, if you own the road, can the church take down the tree then? Because we own the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, you know-
I mean, the church is gonna take it down anyway, right?
They were, but here's-
But then it's in our, and it's-
Right, but then we'll close down both lanes of the road, let it take it down.
When's DOT gonna do the tree?
Never.
Exactly, until it falls, I mean, and then, then we have a mess.
So we have no control over the road right now, and we're, we're just complaining over timing, is basically what we're, the discussion's over timing. My thing would be, my thing would be to do it sooner than later. And you got a great, you got a good thing, you know, we can police it better, we can knock the speed limit down, and hopefully curb, and knock the trucks down, and curb the whole thing. People are gonna be like, I'm not doing that, 'cause every time, I've been through here five times, and I got caught three, doing 45 and a 25. Well then, you know what, I'm going down problems road.
I, I love the idea, if we could somehow, no, no trucks to put through there, I'm a big fan of that, if we're able to, to, you know, the timeline up, if we were able to put the trucks, eliminate trucks from that, 'cause to, the point that was made that, that 50% is coming from that, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang my hat on if DOT, if we take it over now, or DOT, and the state can't come back and take it back over from us, if there was a willingness, and it, and I forget the terminology in real estate where they just take over the land, but-
Give it a week.
Yeah.
But that could happen, so it's, it's not like you can say never, just because it's ours right now, so.
It'd be, it'd be much harder for them to do.
Well, Joe, to that, to that point, and again, it's a good point, but to that point, we can, there's a lot of stuff hinging upon, when we start, we start to talk like the Heritage District, or the Downtown District, or whatever, there's a lot of stuff extends from this decision. Whether it's the four lane coming in, and we, we putting the brakes on it, that may never come us. It may never come up, but if it does, at least we got a say in it. And even if North Carolina wants to come in and do something about it, we got a say in it. Right now, we don't, and-
It's a, it's a huge monetary deterrent, too. If we own this road, and we have a slew of businesses, the amount of money that it would cost them to come in here, and to take it over through Emmett, or Maine, or whatever, that's why South Boulevard hasn't gotten widened, widened to this date, because it's too costly to move everything. That's, I mean, they're only doing it where they're redeveloping, where it's not so costly, but it's so narrow in those other places, because it's too costly to do it. So it, that's a huge deterrent to do it, if it's developed in a certain way, 'cause they, they have to buy it, they can't just take it and throw you out. So, you know, there, there's some leverage.
I don't, I don't plan that there'll be that many businesses in here, but I-
Not a slew, Ian, not a slew.
No, but, I mean, okay, I don't mean like, you know-
I know what you mean.
I, I don't wanna be misquoted as to, you know, this being a, but, but as, as, you know, if the, if the property isn't cheap, it's a deterrent, you know, and, 'cause they would have to move more than just buildings. It would be infrastructure, and it's costly.
Yeah. All right, do you wanna, do you guys wanna vote on this?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with voting on it. I was, I was happy to be able to discuss it, like I said, when it first came up.
Well, and you, well legally, you said to bring the petition back, and that would be more formal, 'cause this is really in reports and updates, but I think it would be a vote to instruct staff to bring petition before you.
All right, so can I get a motion to, who wants to make that motion? Jamie?
Well, trying to get a motion to-
Instruct staff to begin the petition process to take over Newtown Road from the North Carolina-South Carolina state line, to the Marvin School Road, Newtown Road, roundabout.
All right.
I'll have to catch that on the record.
Yes. You can say so moved on that.
So moved.
Further discussion?
The only discussion I have is, is the way that the road is right now, with the, the aprons being so deep, Christina, can they fill those in? Can they put in, lay in something in there that can fill up those holes?
They can probably put in some ABC crushed concrete kinda stuff, but they're, they're not gonna put in asphalt.
Yeah, no, no, I would, no, just something that at least fills it up and, and kind of, you know, like I said, builds an apron.
Yeah.
I realized that we had control over the fact of eighteen wheelers, which, but, uh, please, and we've gotta get, I saw eighteen wheelers today as I was mowing my grass going down Marvin Road. And, uh, I think we need to, we, we need to deter that special, specially, so, um
Okay. Alright. Further discussion?
No.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes. Thank you Christina.
So I have two more items in admin report, um, I'm gonna pass that. So there, the manhole covers in, in Firethorn, it's coming around, the manhole covers in Firethorn have been an issue for the last couple of months. Obviously, there's some manhole covers that exceed our specifications for depth, and they were brought to our attention back in November shortly after the contractor left, and it was, you know, submitted to the engineer to put into a punch list, and that punch list is reviewed before the contract is approved by DOT and by us. Well during the time that the communication had happened, there was another issue in that neighborhood that was, um, for the speed tables, and there was an agreement made with DOT and the HOA years ago that basically said, you have speed tables, you're gonna maintain them, if we come in and resurface, you're still to maintain those speed tables. So, that being said, when the issue came up with the speed tables, the HOA then told the, um, the subcontractor or DOT that they would fix whatever the issue was. So during that time, I think our engineer just so happened to overlook the manhole cover issue because the other issue was, was fixed, and, um, you can see the slew of emails that I've passed around that are at your, um, your, to your table, but he estimated approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars, it's probably gonna be less than that because we're already gonna have someone coming out for some asphalt. So at this time, I passed around the resolution that we approved back in the spring of this year, that basically said we are accepting these roads upon completion of the project, and that has been done. The unfortunate event is the manhole covers were overlooked, and that's an issue that we have to address. Obviously DOT is out of the picture by now, um, their subcontractor has left the game and has finished the contract, and now it's an issue between us and, and the engineer if we want to pursue it.
So who made the mistake?
Well, the, if you read the email, Mike basically says that he overlooked it.
Okay, well then, AMT needs to fix it.
So at this time, I can pursue with AMT to, to get it fixed at their cost, we can either not fix it at all, or we can pay to fix it.
We just, we just out of aid, I mean, it's, I mean, I'm sorry, but like, they made the mistake, he said he overlooked it, it's his fault, AMT's gotta fix it. We pay, we pay them a lot of money, we're, we are not experts in that, and we're, I, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you've just had these roads paved, there's a giant dip when people hit these manhole covers, and, you know, we're not the experts, we rely on the company that we contract and pay a lot of money to, they're the ones that drop the ball, they're the ones that need to figure out how to fix it.
I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, I will have a conversation
How's everybody else feel? I mean, I'm just one person to get tired of it.
They, they did it, they, and he admitted to the mistake, then they should fix the mistake, I mean, that's what I've always done in my businesses.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree. And the only thing I, as I look at the letter, I'll have the adjustments, the manhole made with no time charged at their cost, but their bare minimum to the village, again, this, this was immediate from the very beginning when they said they were done and I identified maybe six or seven manhole covers. Um, there, if they're worried about, you're worried about a relationship or whatever, there's what's called errors and omissions insurance, that I'm sure engineering firms as well as, uh, Kim, you probably have it as a real estate agent, um, errors and omissions in anything we do, and it was a complete, it's not like we didn't identify it and they left, this was identified well before any of this, they were supposed to leave, because it was within a week, I, I think I identified, back in October, or
Yeah, Joe, you, you sent the email to Christina, October fifteenth of last year, and we're just now getting an answer in September of this year. I'm not sure.
It's, it's just not bad, it's just dragged on, my point is, is like, we identified, they're obviously not finished, and they said they'd take a look at them, how the speed humps got in the middle of that, I can see how the HOA said, well, we're gonna clean them up and, and we repainted them, that's great, but that has nothing to do with the other checkoff list, and the fact that they didn't, and listen to them, that if they're gonna sign off on it, they need to do a drive-by and identify each manhole cover that I identified for them, I went on then and kind of marked them and said, this is, this is unacceptable from, and, and we get, I'm sure Jamie, you may get complaints from neighbors as well, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Mike and I'll give you an update at the work session.
Okay.
And then the last item I have is, not on the agenda, but it's some good news to leave the admin report with. So OSBM, the Office of State Budget Management, came back with population estimates, and Marvin is in the top five growing, fastest growing municipality in the state, top five percent, I'm sorry, and then we're third in the Charlotte Mecklenburg area, Charlotte metro area. Just wanted to let you know that, that's a good piece of information.
Super.
Super.
Thanks Christina.
Alright.
Marvin is what, third in what?
In the Charlotte metro area.
The fastest growing. Yeah.
I mean, we're almost, we're almost built out, I don't know how we're fastest growing.
Alright.
We won't be next year.
Won't have to take any place to put anybody, okay. Alright, uh, planners report, Rowhead.
Okay, um, so as most of you probably noticed, Marvin Gardens Publix is almost done, um, they, uh, we wanna talk about ribbon cutting kind of ceremony, and, uh, the thing at the table is, would you, would Mr. Mayor or any of you be interested in participating in some sort of
Yeah, that'd be fun, let's do it. Can I get a giant pair of scissors?
Yeah, yeah, some, some sort of ceremonial event, um, with Publix and
I'll do it if Joe doesn't wanna do it.
I think Joe's gonna race you over.
I know. Joe wants a giant pair of scissors too.
He likes it. Ah, yeah, yeah.
My fear's gonna be on the other side of the scissor end.
It looks good over there though, like, it's coming right along, I drove by the other way.
It does look great. Um, but then the question is, do you guys wanna do it the day before or the morning of the opening? If the morning of is probably gonna be like six or seven AM.
Oh yeah, no, the day before, it's like, it's ceremonial, woo, they'll give us a tour of the store and
Breaching of wings.
Yeah.
Rowhead, what did the AMT recommend?
Um, they didn't recommend anything, they just provided both options.
The day before, they recommended the day before, Joe.
For you, the day before the day before. Bring your own scissors.
You can't hide your own shovel.
Great, I don't have a
Early is because people in, in the supermarket business get there early, so this is before they open, more so than
Okay, so I don't have a public day of opening yet, they don't have a, they don't know what day it is going to be yet, but they know it's gonna be sometime in the fall, uh, most likely, uh, so I will get you, uh, the, you know, the opening day date when I know it. And I'll debut well in advance.
Okay.
Okay, um, so Village Center renderings, um, since I wrote this report, I actually did find someone, um, I found him over the weekend, kind of randomly, and so we're working out whether he would be able to take on the project, but, uh, it sounded like he would be able to, and I'll update you guys at the work session, um, about this topic.
Awesome.
Okay, uh, Steve, uh, just wanted to also say that Road Resurfacing Ordinance is gonna be at the work session as well. Um, but the Village Center timeline, um, so last, uh, or maybe a few weeks ago, I presented like a, a four-line timeline, um, but since then, Christina and I have much, uh, more, went into much more detail about, um, the various parts of the timeline, and I kind of made a Gantt chart like this, but it's not in your packet because I'll be handing it out at the work session, but I made a, like a very detailed, uh, timeline of, you know, when we have to bid for specific projects, like the topic of each of the strategic plan, um, each of the, uh, meetings, et cetera, and, uh, I guess I could bring it out now, but
Yeah, yeah, we'll have more discussion at the work session, very detailed discussion at the work session is basically what it boils down to.
Yeah.
I would just email this to Bob and Joe so that they have it.
That's not it.
That's not, yeah, that's
Oh, this is it?
That's for something else.
I made something like this, but for this Village Center timeline for the rest of the year, which will include like all of the things that we're bidding out and, um, you know, the very specific topics.
So if you recall, in his last report for this topic, he had like four, basically, in the fall of this year, we'll do this, and the spring of this year, we'll do this, and what we did is, we really pinpointed exact steps and what would take place and exact months and exact deadlines, so at the work session, we'll go over all of the exact timelines in detail.
And it also helped us further, you know, realize that those dates that I put in were reasonable and kind of, uh, kind of more pinpoint the exact start and end months of those, those dates. But anyway, uh, point is, that's being on the work session as well. Um, and finally, the land use plan update, uh, the land use plan final draft has already been sent to the planning board for their review, they'll, they'll give it their final, you know, okay, at their next planning board meeting, which is after the town hall, so they'll be able to look at, uh, some of the comments that were made as well, and they will submit it to you, uh, at the work session, which then, if you guys are fine with, uh, having another month to look over it, and then provide that discussion and final like comments at the October work session, uh, just like we did last time for the first half of it, uh, but this is for everything, formatting, pictures, maps, every word, every period, like, everything will be given to you at the work session and for review at the October one.
So it'll be the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything.
Come on, it's funny, everybody lighten up.
Okay, that's, that's all I really have for updates, every one of them was just really an update, no discussion, as long as everyone's fine with what we're going on, what's going on here.
Alright, cool, thanks Rowhead.
Okay.
Uh, roads report, Christina.
I don't have anything else other than what was in my admin report.
Okay. Can we, because it's roads, can I ask a roads question? Since we had the discussion at the work session last, whatever it was, I mean, in August, that they were not gonna be doing any new resurfacing, can we put out an email, like, is this an appropriate time, put out an email to the community updating them on kind of, DOT's not resurfacing, we will not be resurfacing, because when people see this, um, I don't know, this is the curtain go, but when they see the asphalt plan of stuff that's already been paved, people are gonna lose their minds, so we need to get in front of that.
Yeah, and there's a, there's an item of discussion that's on unfinished number four.
Four, okay.
So we can look at that at that time and make sure you're
Very good.
Make sure you're
Okay, alright, cool. Alright, deputy use report. We could try and change this.
Yes, it says Eason.
Yeah, I was like, wait, that's, I was like, that's not my name.
That's, that's not me.
Does, does it?
Questions or anything?
I have to say, but, more, there were four.
How are we doing?
I didn't get it in time for the
Being safe?
Still be in touch.
Get a speeder or something?
Uh, I mean, it's really Marvin School Roads, the main Joker's really like, not there anymore.
Good.
Um, obviously, um, but Marvin School Road is pretty much the main road.
Okay.
So we're trying.
We, we have the deputy report, we didn't get it in time to put in the agenda, but um, Austin, can you email it to cancel?
I think we'll, we'll look at it.
We'll, we'll email it to them.
Okay.
Mason, how are we looking with, um, any type of, any type of crime or anything like that, have we seen any kind of change, is it going down, up, or is it
About the same. About the same. I mean, looking at the number wise, it's all about the same, as far as like larcenies and stuff like that, definitely not a change. There's been a couple, which for Firethorn, up at the clubhouse, there's been two larcenies within the last month and a half, people either smashing or leaving their car unlocked. So just, I guess people of Firethorn, if they're playing golf, make sure they lock their car, don't leave anything valuable inside of it.
Aren't they following people from the banks? That's what I heard.
That's one of them, possibly.
Yeah.
Um, and then
So what's that?
Car out.
Big tournament was two weekends ago, and they followed somebody from the bank when they got a large cash, cash withdrawal, and they left it in their car, and they smashed the window, and within like, I mean, like, it was like quick, in, in the middle of the day, like, tons of offers and, you know, people
The elderly female left her car unlocked, put her purse in the car, they watched her put the purse in the car.
Yeah.
Went up, opened it, got the purse and then left, on a matter of thirty seconds, and she, basically, she went to the car, dropped the card off and walked back and it was gone.
Yeah, the golf cart, like, beat, like, she had like, put her stuff in the car, taken the cart up to the car, up to the clubhouse and came back.
But we haven't found that person.
Um, to my understanding, I think the detectives have the case, and I think they went to go look at the footage, um, that I guess the injures as you come in and out, see if they can get anything off.
Block or whatever you guys have, it was, you know.
But overall, everything pretty vandalism and that, everything pretty
Yeah, it, it's all about the same, each, each time of, there're probably gonna be three or four each month, there was a, I think we had a big, not really a big spike, there was a bunch of car break-ins up on the north side, um, I think technically Marvin was on three, um, but there was a couple, like, you know, hunters, pretty hard, so.
Alright.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mason.
Thanks for all you do.
Um, yes, um, planning board chair report, John's not here. Bob, you got anything from planning board?
Um, no, you know, the brief, the meet was brief, uh, they talked about the land use plan, um, and the term holding regarding, um, the feedback, uh, which they will find with, uh, and we spent a lot of time on, coming up on the agenda is the pool, um, and talked about swimming pool, that was, that was basically just of it.
Okay, cool, thank you. Uh, next up Parks, Rec and Greenway Chair, John.
Um, just to recap, a few items from our September first meeting, uh, we did welcome a new, uh, member to the Parks Recycling Board Committee, uh, his name is Dan Wilson, so you might see him around at different events and things like that in the future. Um, he has some engineering background too, which, uh, we think we really helped, uh, some of the projects that we're looking at. Um, we also, uh, recognized, uh, one of our local Eagle Scouts, Tristan Ridgeway, uh, if you get a chance, by the community gardens in front of the park, he built a mailbox structure there that we keep a lot of information in there about local plants and things that we have in the garden there, but that was his Eagle Scout project that he did, and he did a nice job there. Um, we moved forward with some stuff, uh, in regards to Tullamore Trail, um, National Night Out, we're still kind of in a holding pattern, if we do move forward with it, it's not gonna be food and everything, it'll be, uh, more just an opportunity for people in the different neighborhoods to come out and really meet with police and fire folks and things like that, kind of a bring your own picnic type thing, so, um, we're not dealing with a lot of food preparation and handing things out and stuff those with. Um, roundabout plantings, we've been focused on this first roundabout here, uh, we had a follow-up meeting today because, uh, if we wanna get things in for the fall, we really felt the need to kind of move that forward more quickly, so we had a special meeting that we called today, we had earlier today, and I believe, um, Ken will be giving you a little bit more information on, uh, later in this meeting. Um, we've been, uh, looking to address some flooding issues we have over at the Marvin Loop, uh, kind of just, uh, to the north of, uh, where Marvin Elementary is, where it goes through the woods there, right after the school, uh, a lot of these heavy rains that we've had, that, that area gets flooded out, uh, we've worked with DOT with some things that they've had along the road, tried to, to ease that, and there's a couple of more things we're looking to do. They had some estimates that were pretty high, so we're, we're looking at other ways to kind of manage that. And, uh, that's, that's really it.
Cool. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Alright, next up, uh, the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Somebody say so moved.
Well, I don't want to change anything.
Okay.
Basically, want to change anything?
So moved.
There you go.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, next up, we have a public hearing, uh, so I need a motion to open the public hearing for CUP application number two zero dash one two four seven eight, eight three hundred Woodmont Drive, pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard.
Swear that nobody's gonna speak.
Okay.
Oh, well, I got them ready to.
Right, so I need a motion to open it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just say it.
So moved.
Alls in favor? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, so first we need to do public comments?
Anybody that's going to speak needs to be sworn in.
Sworn in, okay.
That includes.
Me and applicant and I think that's it.
Okay.
No one else has signed up according to my.
Okay, nobody else has signed up for the public comments? Okay.
Okay, you know it's real. And so you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, for help you God.
I do.
And to the applicant?
Who's the applicant?
Um, we have Suzanne Hufffer, who is the resident at, uh, eighty-three hundred Woodmont Drive. Um, Suzanne, are you there?
Yep, we're here. Good evening, hello.
Hi. Um, so before we start, we just have to, uh, swear you in just to testify that you're going to, uh, say the truth.
Okay Suzanne, uh, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, for help you God?
Yes.
Alright, great, thank you.
Does anybody else need to sworn in?
Nope. Anybody else?
I don't think so.
Nope, okay.
Okay, so.
Do we have any public comments?
Nope.
Okay, so we can just move on to the.
He can go ahead and present, this is the hearing.
Um, yeah, there's one, there's one comment, the neighbor, the side yard neighbor, uh, who is, uh, Tim Huckbody, has, uh.
Email it to me.
Yeah, provided the comments in the beginning, they said a couple of comments about, uh, the tree at the corner of their lot and, uh, the Hufffers' lot and about the drainage. And in the course of the planning board recommendations, um, both of those issues, he sent another email stating that both of those issues were addressed to his satisfaction and that he has no further objections or, or any comments that he would like to provide to the council. Um, and I put that in the report as well. So seeing that, um, this pool, um, I really did try to look at it and see if this would be able to not have to have a CUP, but alas, it is a pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard. Um, and I realized in the packet that it wasn't like, it was a copy of, uh, printout, so it didn't come out very clearly. Um, so I'd like to just, um, like pull, uh, pull a visual of the, uh, of the aerial that I, that, that I meant to put in the packet, but it didn't scan correctly. Give me one second, I'll pull that up. Alright. So here, here you can see, um, and I'll share this, I'll share the screen too, so people watching can see. Um, you can see how the Hufffers' yard, uh, is adjacent to what's technically the side yard line of, uh, the Huckbodies' yard, uh, by a very short, you know, margin, but it is the case. And that's what requires this to be a CUP. Um, pool's not even going on that side of the yard. Um, so in, in that sense, the drainage is not even going towards the Huckbodies', uh, property, it's going more towards the public's, uh, property. And so the contractor said that the drainage would not be affected for, uh, the Huckbodies' yard and, uh, the applicant has, uh, got an arborist to, uh, have some consultation that the, um, the pool would not affect the tree. And if they really wanted to be sure, they could move it another foot or two, but they didn't have to. Um, and so the planning board recommended to, well, the planning board recommended to approve with the condition that they make sure the drainage would not affect Huckbodies' uh, yard and the applicant, uh, found out that it would not, uh, the way it's designed. So, um, my recommendation was to approve as, uh, as presented and, uh, the, uh, if the applicant has anything else to say, um, I guess that is, that is your, now's your chance to say that.
Planning board has already reviewed, correct?
Yeah.
Given their approval?
Right.
Anybody on council have any questions? Any concerns?
Board, yeah, did a good job, so, wising this, you know, we even just as much depth as the other two pools combined and, uh, they approved the project, so. Um, point of order, did we close the public comments?
We have not.
No, we were waiting to see if the applicant wanted to speak.
Well, that's, that's not considered public comments, is it?
Oh, I guess not.
Well, it, it is, this is a public hearing, which is your public comments in a hearing like this or during the, the hearing. So this is, uh, the.
Well, I just thought that you bring the applicant in on the discussion and consideration and stuff, or if they weren't speak and stuff, but I just want to make sure we're, we're crossing our Ts and dotting our As.
Yeah, you're right, my, my apologies. I, I started off by making the public comment from Tim Huck, uh, Huckbodies' perspective and then I just went right into describing the application without giving you a chance to close the public comment section, I'm sorry about that, so.
Alright, so I need a motion to close the public comments.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Um, okay, so now we're discussing the consideration, any further discussion?
Nope.
No, I'm fine.
Alright, so, uh, you want me to go through findings of fact, each one individually and vote, and, uh, make a motion individually or just do them all at the same time?
With one like this, with, with it being a pool without any opposition, you can do them collectively, it is your choice.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve, let me do this right, the conditional use permit number two zero one two four seven eight. And we'll make the following findings of fact. Okay. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use will meet all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan, as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter in the village land use plan. And additional review criteria as stated in this chapter shall also be considered and addressed where required.
But there are nothing.
But there are, and there are no additional review criteria for the proposed use. So I need a motion.
You got a motion to that?
Yep.
So moved.
Alright, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 And then need a motion to approve the permit.
Motion passes, and so I need a motion to approve the permit?
The conditional use.
Oh, the, oh, I thought that's what it is, sorry. So now I need a motion to approve the conditional use permit number two zero one two four seven eight for eighty-three hundred Woodmont Drive.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, congratulations, enjoy your pool. Oh, she's, she's so.
You have a lot of duty.
You too.
Is there a ribbon cutting for that?
Um, alright, next up Village Hall. Um, number one, discussion and consideration of resolution two zero two zero dash zero nine zero three to exempt architectural design services for Village Hall from procurement requirements. Christina.
So several things here, uh, at the last council meeting, actually I think it was a special meeting we had in reference to a, um, potential idea for locating Village Hall beside our adjacent property or aside our property on New Town Hall. Um, this resolution basically would allow us to enter an agreement with any type of architectural services person, uh, company where we don't have to bid it out, whether it be this project, I mean, whether it be this location that y'all are looking at, whether it be our existing location, any location, it doesn't matter. We still have to get architectural services done. Um, so this would basically allow us to do that without doing the RFP. This, this has no impact about, about where we're going, basically.
Okay, and is this a big deal if we're exempting ourselves from this?
No, it's not, it's statutory allowed up to the fifty thousand. And that's because with architects, you actually have to do, uh, request for qualifications, find them qualified, meet with them, discuss it, it's a lengthy process. So if it's, if it's under fifty thousand statute allows you to say you don't have to do that, you would still be able to approve the, the contract ultimately, but you don't have to go through that lengthy qualification process. So it's not a big deal and it's following a statutory authorized provision.
And we want to do this because this is the same architecture firm that we've been using and they've got all the, you know, knowledge, et cetera, and we don't.
So the, um.
Right, so we're not from, from scratch, basically.
Right, the next item is the actual contract.
Okay.
But this, this would apply to any architectural services area, if we wanted to change it. If y'all didn't want to approve the next contract, if you wanted to go with someone else, it's still, this resolution would still suffice.
Okay.
For this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright. Um, alright, anybody want to make a motion to approve the resolution? Alright, so I need a motion to approve resolution two zero two zero dash zero nine zero three to exempt architectural design services for Village Hall project from procurement requirements.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes. Next up, we have discussion and consideration of entering agreement with urban architect for Village Hall plan and authorized administrator to revise contract with firm at an overall cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and execute contract contingent upon attorney review.
So again, as I previously stated at the last council meeting, um, I was advised to go ahead and look at a engineering and architectural agreement to pursue, um, alternative plans at Village Hall. And so what you have in your agenda packet is an architectural agreement for, uh, urban architect to go through and revise the plans as you see in your agenda packet, the very basic kind of conceptual ideas for the site layout. And then there's a structure that council seemed to have a consensus that they like the appearance of. So this would basically allow us to enter an agreement with the architect to revise our Village Hall plans and to, um, get a general site layout as we've got in the agenda packets. It's roughly forty, around forty thousand dollars, give or take. So what I'm asking for is agreement on, uh, this contract and for me to revise it to not exceed fifty thousand dollars.
So is this contract to just get us back up to code or is this to completely change the exterior?
Completely change the exterior.
Okay.
We already, we are already under a new contract to get us up to code.
Okay. And have we, have we paid them money to do that and then we're paying them more, an additional amount to then change it all?
Yes. Now I have told them to halt the plans of revising the current plans that we have now, based on, based on this.
Spend as much money?
Yes.
Okay. And we need to, this is, this forty thousand dollar-ish contract doesn't matter where we put it?
Um, I'm not particularly sure because I did give them the parcels that we were looking at.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to, you know.
There could be some differences if the terrain is substantially different, other than flat, there would be some, there have to be some allowances for that, for the foundation. But if it's generally flat, there shouldn't be much of a change.
I don't think it's site specific, but I did give them the parcels to look at, so I mean, I can ask them those questions and if y'all, if you don't feel comfortable making a motion, um, based on not knowing that answer, we can do it at the work session or y'all can make it contingent upon.
Well, again, I don't want to, I don't want to slow this down, I, I want to keep moving it forward, but I don't want to approve it, I mean, I guess we can't make the contingent on.
It not being.
It not being site specific.
And it was already noted to be a fun attorney review.
Yeah.
So y'all were telling me to review and make sure it's not.
Site specific, okay.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, I mean, I'm good, I'm, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So this would basically mean we're, we're not going with what the, the plans we have now, we're.
I mean, I don't want to, I, I don't like the barn, I've never liked the barn. If we're going to do something, I'd rather it be pretty.
Well.
Right? I don't know, I'm asking you guys, or do you want to stick with the barn?
No, you want to do it right. I think, I think, again, when we had the discussion about the, the heritage district or the downtown district or whatever, that there were some kind of things that were thrown out and I think, I think we're pretty much in, in relative agreement that it want, it would be fit, fitting for that. I don't think what we currently have is fitting for that.
Okay.
So if you're going to do it, and, and it's crazy because, and now every time I go somewhere, I was in San Francisco this week, this weekend, in a walk by town hall. And you think of all that goes into a town hall, I mean, if something's done, it's done right. And, and you, you don't want to, you don't want to look at something or do something and come back five years later and go, why, what were we thinking? What, what, why does this, why does this not fit in here? That's going to, that's, that's going to come back on us for making that. So I would, I would much rather have, take the appropriate steps and do the right things to, to make it look right, presented right. People can be, people look at it and go, yeah, that's not, that's not Village Hall, you know, that's, I'm proud of that, I'm proud to be, so far, people are proud to live in the Village of Marvin. We don't want to be the Laugh in Stockholm of Union Town here in North Carolina because we just, we just said, no, let's just go with that, it's fine.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I mean, we want to do it right.
And as long as.
Joe, Bob? Joe, we keep muting you because you're so loud.
Now I'm muting myself. I, from the beginning, have always looked at that, we'll label it the barn look, um, and say, how does that, how does that represent Marvin? To Jamie's point, how does that make me feel like, wow, I'm going to town hall, they're proud of it and stuff, so. Um, design inside, you know, I think that, uh, you put that on staff and, and what they need and, and, and I would encourage them too. I think we've got it figured out, but, you know, as staff grows and we need spaces for an officer or whatever, what is it that they need and space-wise, Austin, you'd probably help with that type of stuff, like even just, you know, the space you need for co, collating things. But the outside look of it, I think is, is everything, it speaks volumes, um, and it's, you know, you get one shot at it really, you want to do it right. And I think it, however it came to be that that was what was going to be decided, I won't go into that because that's in the past and we have an opportunity to not only revisit locations, but also revisit the outside look.
Did I just get volunteered for something?
No. Bob?
I didn't leave the room.
But the first exposure I saw to the Village Hall as it was designed and meant to be was, of course, in, in January. And Councilman Lyon and I, you know, saw it for the first time. I mean, I, I, I figured, okay, that's what we need, that's what the prior council, uh, thought needed to be. Um, since then, you know, after the special meeting that we had, looking at that particular rendering, as it was called Bullpoint, I, I actually looked at that and said, gee, wow, that's more representative. Um, my, even my only thought was, okay, so it seems like, and just correct me if I'm wrong, it just seems like we're kind of taking a step back in going back to the drawing board. And I guess my question was, when I saw it, I went, well, I, prior council approved and liked what was there and was going to fit into Marvin. So I, I just not, I mean, I was just kind of like, what has changed? Now, saying that, I guess you can always do something with the facade, you can do something with the outside. Looking at what I saw in January from what I can remember, I think it was, was it two stories, I think it was either two story or was it just one story? It was two stories, right?
I think it was.
Those two stories with the unfinished second story.
So my, my thought was, okay, you know, we can evolve and change and, and so I thought, well, maybe we can reduce costs, if you will, and change even this part, but if, if the two floors were okay, you know, the way it was disassembled, laid out with the office and stuff, um, and to Jamie's point, I, I, you know, I'm going to say, we want to make sure we got it right. We, we don't want to go back and realize, oops, you know, we should have had an extra space here or something there. So that was my only, my only comment, so it was just that, I was kind of looking at this like, what did the prior council vote on and why was it, why did it look so good then and now, and now we're going to kind of revise it and spend some money towards it? And now, and now we're going to kind of revise it and spend some money towards it. But, you know, again, we can evolve, we can change. That, that's my only comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do you guys want to, want to make a motion? You want to make a motion? Geez, you guys are coming.
Hell, hell, hell.
All right, you're going to do it? Do it, Jamie.
Jamie, just make sure your motion includes contingent upon it not being site-specific.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize administrator revise contract with firm at an overall cost not to exceed $50,000 and execute contract contingent upon attorney review and that it is not site-specific in that attorney review.
With Urban Architects?
With Urban Architects.
Okay, further discussion, good job. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you very much. All right, Christina, legal memo on, oh, sorry.
Chaplin.
Legal, legal memo. It says Christina, but I bet Chaplin's going to present this. Legal memo on ideas for shared infrastructure and common space.
Okay, I was provided with the.
Do we have this? Oh, we don't have this, okay.
No, this is just going to kind of be about my legal notes and just issues. About the Village Center concept, where the village already has an existing piece of property. There are two other property owners, but the actual site for the town hall is different from where the town's current site is. And there was discussion, could we do a long-term lease? You could, but I wouldn't, I would not lease. Because then you're going to have a lease, you're not going to own the property, you're also going to be leasing to someone else. It's going to bring up some tax considerations and it just further complicates matters. So what you would do is have a property swap agreement with the two other parties. You would set forth terms where everybody puts their property in the middle. You do a combination plat, where you combine it, and then you do a subdivision, subdivision plat. So you combine it all together and then you break it up into pieces. With that, you'd have to determine cost allocations. There are also going to be responsibilities with development. One thing you're going to have to look at would be parking, because you're going to have shared easements or agreements for parking, access, utilities, and the common areas. You're likely going to have some restrictive covenants on this property to make sure that the common areas are taken care of, depending on the structure, because it is a little bit different if you're going in from the beginning and putting these parcels together and then breaking them up, because you're part of an overall development plan. And then with the site improvements, who's going to construct? Is there going to be a leader cost allocation? And then you're going to look at water, sewer, electric, sidewalks, access with any road improvements, and then the parking. Joint development, that means that you're working together with the other people that are developing in terms, conditions, and joint goals. Joint development also means you could be subject to the financial constraints of other parties, because if everybody's doing a cost share allocation and one party isn't ready to go, you've got to be careful on how you structure that so Village Hall can still get developed. But there can be challenges if it's all part of a larger, and you have infrastructure that's shared. You can handle it, but it's a concern. And then would also need to make sure, we just look at the tax considerations in general. Town hall, Village Hall, property is not taxed or assessed, the private property is. Here, you're going to have a little bit of a mixed use and concept. We can handle it, but we've got to look at that, and it's just another issue. So it's, it's more complicated going in, in a joint development, but it can be handled. And those are kind of the issues laid out of how you do it. And a lot of it would be in that property swap agreement, when you all agreed to put it into the.
Collect a pot?
Put it into the pot and then you, you cut it up. But once you cut it up with the subdivision, and your subdivision agreement will be set forth in there. So the village would put its property in the pot and it would go somewhere else. And then the village would get a specific piece of property, had a deeded piece of property. It would own, it would control that property. And some other party would have the portion or a part of the village's former property. And it's kind of, but in a nutshell, it's a very high level, but those are your issues. And it can get interesting when you do the parking, the access, and the common areas.
So Chaplin, as we move to a next step, is it something where we can put that together and then present it to the other property owners?
Yes.
You know, are we going to just kind of chop this thing up and, and in my words, beat it to death? Can we not put it together as the village and present it back to them? And let them, let them redline it or give us their thoughts on it, so we're not slowing up the, so we're, we're in control of the process?
Correct.
So to speak. And make recommendations on, because again, as I look at this, and I've got it right here, I think the vast majority, unless I'm reading something wrong, we have the largest parcel of land, correct?
No, I don't think we contribute the largest parcel. I thought it was.
Rohit, Bobby?
What we own is the largest.
Okay.
We're not going to contribute that parcel, we're going to contribute this little schmidgen up here.
No, I got it, that's what I'm looking at.
We're not contributing all of our property, but we have the largest share of property at our core.
Right, so whether we do it or we don't, can the next step be that we put together what we believe should be the solution?
Yes.
And present it to them and let them come back? Because that, I think we're going to get, two things are going to happen. One is, I think we're going to get hung up by someone just going, well, I don't know if I want to move that fast. The second one is going to be, and I believe that there's going to be, their, their idea of this is going to be financial, monetary exchange of this. Whereas we need to be upfront in our piece of it to say, we're not looking at this from a monetary, we may be looking at this from a opportunity cost as opposed to a monetary.
Right, and I think you would start with a memorandum of understanding set forth before you get with all these complicated agreements.
Right.
Which will be, it'll still take a while to negotiate that and get approved. That more formally sets forth the terms and it says, it's a memorandum of understanding, it's not a binding agreement. However, we work towards a binding agreement, and here are the general terms. And then you outline the general terms and get more specifics of the key issues that I outlined.
And do we, do we as council work together with you to come up with that?
Structure.
Structure?
Yes, and I would do that under contractual negotiations.
I was going to say, can we do that in close session?
You can't do that publicly, because then everybody knows your, your talking points and your contract points.
We can add that to close session tonight, then?
Yes.
Because we're going to a close session anyway.
Okay. Go just need to amend the agenda.
We're going under there to start with the.
Oh, it's for the same purpose, I never found it there.
All right, so we can discuss the memorandum of.
You can instruct me to discuss, yeah, contract terms, is basically what it will be.
Okay. Are you guys good with that? Bob, Joe? I know you can't see me, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. All right.
So, to your point, Councilman Lyon, I did have a brief conversation with both Mark and Scott last week, and I do believe that they want to kind of go by their own timeline. Or, I don't know about collectively, but I know at least one of them wants to have some time to research some things on his end to do some financial analysis on his property. We did, again, had a brief conversation about compensation. We didn't talk about any numbers in particular. They both did let me know that they are seeking compensation, so I don't, I don't know if it's $1,000, I don't know if it's $500,000. Just to put that out there. In the, in the meantime, someone had threw out the Fensher property as we were having these conversations. And we had a conversation today, he's here in attendance, if y'all want to ask any questions to him. We did have a brief conversation this morning, nothing, nothing detailed was discussed. He's had property in his family for several years, he wants to keep it with a good intent, and he's willing to work, you know, with council or the village in any way, shape, or form to make something happen. That's really all, we have a brief conversation, if y'all wanted to entertain anything on his property. That's kind of the last option that we saw as not going to the corner.
Okay.
Thirteen acres, I believe it is?
Yeah. So.
We lost a half acre to the roundabout, so I think it was fourteen, two or three now, I think, anyway.
Thank, I mean, I know that you had, is it okay if we invite Mr. Fensher to?
Absolutely.
Chat with us, are you guys okay with that? Bob, Joe, Andy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for, I know that you had reached out to Rohit and said, hey, I'm willing to, you know, work with you guys as well. So thank you for doing that, and thanks for coming in tonight, I appreciate that, we all appreciate that. I know that you have been in, like, really, like, you've been in talks with, doing something with the Heritage District. We're, we've changed it to the Heritage District, not the Downey.
That's the name.
Yeah, that's the new name, yeah, you like that, that's good, right?
I've got several other parts of the year.
Yeah, Heritage District, that's, yes, so.
I had a heritage pecan tree up there.
See that?
D O T took it down, a hundred-year-old pecan, off of him to keep the tree.
Yeah.
Anyway.
But thank you for coming in.
Thank you all for having me.
Absolutely. I mean, we're, again, we want to, we're going to do this once, we want to make sure we're doing it right. You know, we had, we've, we've got the property in the corner, we've talked about doing it here. The churches, you know, the church does not want to do it, we've talked to the church over here, they don't want to do it, which is understandable and fine. So before, we're like, okay, let's stick this, you know, shovel to the dirt at the corner, let's, you know, exhaust all of our opportunities and, or all of our options, I should say. So you, throwing out your property is definitely another option for us to consider, so. I don't know kind of what your thoughts are, if you have any. I mean, again, this kind of came out of the, came out of the blue for us, or for me at least, so.
Let me interject, and welcome Mr. Fensher. I know it's been a couple of years since you and I sat down and talked about it, but you have a lot of history for those that are new in the council. You have a lot of history with the town where you've had acreage, you shared with me ideas a long time ago. And I think, back then, it was, you know, just that ideas. And now we're, we're basically, as Kim said, just crossing off and making sure we're looking at all opportunities, especially that involve other landowners and instead of just putting the town hall on that corner. And I know you had some ideas, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that and the, you know, the things that, because, again, this is something that we just want to make sure we exhaust, we've got one chance of doing this. But welcome back, good to see you. I couldn't tell with the video who was sitting in the back, but now, I realize that was you now, once.
I'm staying here at the hall, that's what I drive to stay here. It's an arm's length. Thank you all again for having me. My name's Tim Fensher, my middle name is Zell. My grandparents and great-grandparents, great-great, anyway, have owned part of Marvin for, I think, over 250 years. The Marvin Creek is, I remember as a kid, that, we'd always go up there and look at that cotton field across from Mr. Joe Carr. And that property had been worked since before the revolution. We found a musket or something out there, my uncle Burton did, he was a chicken farmer there. But we're farm people, I'm not a big-time developer. But just because our farm and land has been in the path of progress, I've had to learn, kind of like riding a horse for the first time, and your daddy hit it with a switch, you learn to ride right then and quick. So I've been in that type of situation. We sold the land across Marvin Blackshaw Land and Province Downs and kept this. Myself and my two sisters decided we'd like to hang on to it. And in hanging on to it, you know, like the daddy used to say, once it's sold, it's sold. So, but I think what we can offer is a blank canvas for the town to, I think the photography suits something like the town hall, a village center. I met with, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we might have seen the design we had from Land Design that we picked up one time. We've done a few sketches, I haven't spent any money, I'm just an old insurance guy. That, so I haven't been, been pushing it. And I have a friend that's still farming here, so. But I've been thinking about during this meeting that, how many changes I've seen in my lifetime for this part of Union County Mecklenburg. I'm a native Matthews, we went through some of the same stuff in developing where the Y is. We were pressed to quit farming there, there were seven developments and a YMCA touching our property. So I wanted something good to happen there. And then we developed the, or sold the thing for Erickson for the retirement, for the seniors to have a place to go. Having some of that in my family, so it's been a, had a little bit of experience this way and saw I've met some good people to work with, also met some folks I wouldn't work with in, in the development business. So my intent for, you know, in reference to my ancestors, is to do something good with it. Anything to stay in a family over 250 years, you have to acknowledge it. Our families talked about in inherited land book. I can remember as a child going to the store and getting Jack's cookies out of the cookie jar. I don't know if y'all remember what they looked like, and they had been Charlotte, they had a big red top on. I think they were penny cookies, maybe went up two cents when I was a kid, but.
Extortion.
I'm not sure, I don't know if my grandfather owned it at one time or not. My grandfather owned a lot of land right here, and, and we raised cotton, raised cattle, soybeans, corn, it's, it's just, you know, it's been a farming community. And I've changed over time, is, that's what I've been sitting here thinking, what all, y'all are, you got swimming pools next to other people's lines, you know, this was, it wasn't a swimming pool fifty miles from here when I was a kid. Swam upon, my mom used to swim at Marvin, at the creek down here on the line, so, growing up. So it's, if I can do anything, I'd like to have something, and maybe a town center and working with the village and put them, put them, you know, if you look at, like, I'm sorry, Mr. Jamie, I didn't get your last name, but looking at other towns and seeing that they did. I had one council member who told me I wasn't, my horizons weren't that fast as his. I needed to go to Milford, Connecticut. So the next month after he told me that, I got on a plane, I went up, looked at what the Village Center in Milford, Connecticut looks like. So I don't think it's Marvin, but, you know, I'm, I haven't been all over the world a whole lot. I know a little bit about what's around here, but I, I want to do something that'd be nice, something that would be a destination for people when they come to see the folks in Marvin. It would be something y'all all would be proud of, my kids and grandkids would be proud of, normally. Had a little, something to do with it, maybe.
Maybe your grandfather would be proud of.
I would hope, yes, sir, he was quite a man too, a lot of the back of the, knew how to raise cotton. So he and Mr. Joe Carr were buddies, as my daddy and Mr. Joe were, so. A lot of, a lot of good families have, were, were that part of Marvin when I was growing up. The land lays pretty good, lends itself to a long street down the middle. I think you could put a cool town hall at one end. I've been at meetings where one lady told me I should put a library here, there's not a library anywhere nearby. All the COVID things brought up, people need places to book that are safe. I was thinking something, uh, you know, with the, to make it work, you'd have to have some commercial, something to make it, make it an economic engine in some regard. And, and I've worked with folks that know how to, uh, make that happen and do a good job. So that tree's gone, that picture is rugby, isn't that the pecan tree?
Yeah.
They left that in, all those stuff. Look at the, uh.
That's before the roundabout was there.
No, that's before the roundabout, wasn't it? That's a big old tree. But it's the, it's the last of the Ezel property. All my other cousins have sold the other part of the 400 acres, so it's gone. So this is it.
That's like this area here. That's the former property. All of that.
How many acres do y'all have over, I call it up the Bill's place. Y'all call it, it's over Marvin School Road. Was, was it Toll Brothers donated to the town?
Just over three.
Yeah, four, almost four.
Almost four?
At, um, Bill, yeah, okay. That's up the Bill's three acres, but he sold out Toll Brothers and the other stuff on that side, behind the churches and whatnot. But I know, I, I appreciate the care and the thought and the time you're giving it to make sure it works good. And, um, you know, we, uh, we have to work with you to put something on close to 14 acres. The only other thing, and you know, you don't want to be like any other town, uh, but 14 acres is almost to the tenth of an acre, the same size footprint at the Matthews Town Hall, I guess. That's just because I'm there every day. I work up there. I've got property up there and I'm around it. And that includes an apartment building beside it and all the way out with Mo's Barbecue and Pizza Peel and everything straight back in the town hall. You can do it a lot prettier than Matthews did. It was kind of just all jumbled up a little bit in there, but, but.
Train car is cool.
What's that?
The train car is cool.
Train car, that the train, train is. And one of my ancestors pictures on the back wall there, trying to borrow some money for their cotton crossing that. He's, you know, he's on the big picture there.
So let me just ask, is this, is this something that you'd be, um, interested in possibly selling to, to Marvin? Or what, what, what is your thought on?
I, I'd like to retain something as, that's the only way I can keep it in the family on part of it.
Right.
If Marvin needs a town hall at the end, we got, I mean, I don't know what numbers are going to be, but everything from, you think the town hall needs an acre, two acres or what you gonna run into? Now, I'm just, from what I just heard tonight, because I haven't even seen the latest picture to John Urban. I know he's a bud, I mean, I know him through Matthews and stuff there, but the, all the different, what, uh, you talked about, different, uh, covenants on parking and everything else. What we'd have is, you can master plan a 14 acre site and do battery things that could make it all work. You might have enough commercial to it to make the economic engine of it work and the town hall work as well. How are you going to do parking? You got one person or a family to deal with.
It's, if we were to go down this road, would you be, would, would you be okay? Because obviously we're trying to build a town hall. This is just not representative. We are getting bigger. We don't have enough space here.
Right.
Would you be okay if we kind of started the process before the rest of the Heritage District kind of got going? Or would you want us to wait until like you had that whole, your whole parcel kind of planned out? Um, or, I mean, have it planned out, but just maybe not start building yet? I guess, is that a good way to ask that question? Yeah.
Mr. Paleno and I think his predecessor, they talked to me maybe about a possible village site here in fifteen years. So I don't want to get it rezoned and change all that, pay taxes on something that, you know, I have no control over. I can keep, we've been farming it for a while. We can keep on farming it for a while. But if y'all were ready to jump on some, I think I know some of the people that can present some things that y'all might, that you could, that they do very good work. And I, you know, we can see what you, what you're thinking about. I don't know if a donation of a couple acres there or swap two acres for, or three acres for three acres of Uncle Bill's, and that looks better legally instead of, you know, I don't want folks or y'all to be in any thing where they say, oh, they gave him great zoning because he gave him, you know, the land or anything like that. But I, I think I got a little bit to say is that we've been here for a long time. I've refused a lot of offers to sell. We want to do something nice for Marvin that my kids and grandkids and my granddaddy and my mama and all, all the others say, well, you know, he paid it, he paid it forward or whatever, sir. And I think Marvin needs a destination.
Yep.
That's, that's, that's about it. I probably talked to another, Rohit knows where I'm coming from, I think.
Yeah, we've had a few conversations and, um, it's why I thought it would be a good idea to invite him.
Great.
No, I appreciate you coming in and, and, I always love that corner because I'd love to dove hunt that field. Got a power line there, it's got some trees. I'm like, boy, I'd love to dove hunt that.
We've had some big dove hunts, uh, at my home place. This time of year it, it was on, we always.
Yeah.
But it was also the same time we had to haul, get in our soybean hay. So I was hauling hay while my buddies were out hunting ducks. But no, I, we want to do something good. We want some, and that's the reason I've held on to it. That's the reason I bought the other four acres, Mr. Bud Ray's land. So Mr. Bud Ray had, had that and they were going to sell it. I said, no, we need to, it needs to be part of whatever we do for the town, so.
Great, okay.
Several town council, we, people calling the next week, wondering, what are you going to do? Wonder if the bulldozer's coming? I said, we just bought it. We had a little money. We bought it and we're sitting on it, so.
Well, thank you so much. I mean, that was very enlightening and, and, and hear the, the history, because I, I'm intrigued by all the history that we've got with the Crane Store and you going in there and the, the property and the land. I mean, that means a lot. And I think that is just the epitome of what we want this to be. We want it to be a story. We want people to come to us and go, okay, because we, we're, right now we're, we're asleep, we're.
Marvin has a gym and what they did with the Jim Crow laws and the whole inheritance land deal.
Yep.
They went against the grain, the folks that lived here, uh, fought them in the Monroeb courthouse and went to state Supreme Court over that decision. So, uh, anyway, the folks, anyway.
There's a great story there.
There is, there is, and there's a lot of good, good history. And it isn't all about the money. It's all about having a nice place that you're proud to be from.
Absolutely.
And I know I don't live down here, but my cows are up there. I couldn't, this, this is what's happening down here faster than I couldn't be in two places. Anyway, but I appreciate y'all's time. Anyway, if you want to meet or get together, just a little bit of what we've done. Same deal was happening with my family back home and I bought the family home place from my cousins who scattered all over the country. They went bulldozing. But I think it's, it's the, uh, the old Fenther house, anyway, it's on the Key Road, right past the development and it's got a picket fence up. And then I put that up to keep people out the door and sort of. But it's, it is, uh, my grandfather built it. It's built in 1912 and it's a, uh, we're a century farm. So I've got enough land at that spot, a barn back behind it that was built by German P O W. It was during World War Two, um, from Camp Sutton that my uncle and great uncle brought to the farm in Matthews to build that farm. While at the same time, my dad was a prisoner of war in Stylag III. So that's the end of the history lesson. I, I'll leave it, but that's, that's where we come from. And two of these Ezels were in World War Two. Their bricks for them, I bought for, at the Matthews Flagpole, but, you know, the value to note their service, uh, Uncle Bill, Uncle Burton, that was a bulge, so.
Both of them were Army then?
Mm-hmm. Both of them were, my dad was Army Air Force.
Right.
Anyway.
Well, thank you. This definitely gives us, no, no, this gives us some stuff to talk about. So thank you very much.
Don't take it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Nice meeting you.
Yeah, Mr. Fenther, thank you for coming and presenting this opportunity. We appreciate it. It was a pleasure talking with you.
It's like the wizard.
Thank you.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was good.
Thanks. I'm glad he had an opportunity to share some of his ass and stuff. I thought that was it. Rohit, real quick, up on the screen you have, is that his, does the property extend down further?
Yeah. Both of these properties are, uh, the Fenther's farm.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. Okay, just.
Forward one, the four acres he was talking about? Yeah, this, yeah, that's, that's, that's the four acres here.
Okay.
It's, uh, 4.3 and this is the other nine acres.
Okay.
But they're both his.
So we can discuss that.
But he's talking, but he's talking about the, the, the 4.3, right?
He's talking about all of it, Bob.
Yeah. He's just, he just at one point mentioned that he bought this four acre separately, but he now owns this whole thirteen acre, thirteen something acres and, uh, it's flat and he was proposing, uh, some sort of town center, which I did measure out. Uh, the little plaza in front of Matthews Library is about exactly 13 acres, just like this.
Yeah, I know exactly where it's from. Been there many times.
Very familiar with Matthews.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if, you know, we're, we're in a, or the council would agree to something that intense like, uh, um, the other town has, uh, Matthews, but, you know, there's, there's obviously potential there and that's, you know, again, and once this doesn't work, I mean, we're, we're literally checking off all the landowners that are really involved that we really could do anything with, you know, consider this is the town district, San Heritage District, you know, whatever they want to, uh, you know, coin it as. But it's got, just certainly is, has potential and he's got a story, um, that four acres, if I'm not mistaken, sold just, I want to say less than 10 years ago. That, that parcel, I remember looking at that when that came up, but that, that was, uh, that whole thing right there was available. But I'm glad he was able to capture that back all in one piece and we're dealing with one owner there. Yeah.
That's, uh, you're right. 2013 was the sale date there.
Okay. Okay, all right. Uh, number four, discussion of revised timeline.
So at your, um, your desk, I passed out a timeline. There were two options on there. Um, one of them was no architectural changes or new plans. And then the other one was.
No changes.
No changes, yeah. So this little spreadsheet that looks like this, well, you can't see it. You've got the share screen. Looks like this.
Oh, yeah, I can stop sharing the screen. In fact, no, I can share the screen with that, um, with that spreadsheet.
So basically with the, the changes that were made, or not changes, but with the motion that was made earlier to go ahead and revise the plans, it looks like this timeline is pretty much what we're going to be binding to. And this is a little bit optimistic, uh, which would have a June, August groundbreaking in 2021. So, um, that being said, we would need to have the location secure of where it is, you know, that we're going to go by the next meeting so that we can start if y'all are looking at this timeline. If not, we can just bump it down a little bit, but we're definitely not going to go with January groundbreaking.
Yeah.
No, you know what? That's what, but that's what we have.
That's fine. We're just moving, we're moving it forward.
Right. And I think, I think, I think what happened here, again, at the end of the night or the end of the day, what we've, we've exhausted and considered all options. We brought all options to the table and for the constituents, they should feel good that we have done that. And what we have to remind our, not only ourselves, but the constituents as well, is that we do have an opportunity with all the things that we've brought to the table to, to utilize that, the, the one piece of property down there for a multi-purpose.
Yep.
We, I don't know, but again, it's neither here nor there, but I think what the constituents or, you know, people should know that we have exhausted and we have considered all options so we can get multiple use out of.
Yes. More bang for your buck.
Right.
Yep.
So.
I mean, I find, I mean, it kind of is what it is at this point. So we're going to try to have a decision by the work session, like nailed down per this timeline.
Well, again, that is for me, and, and if I could have gone back to the call we had, I wish we would have just went ahead and jumped on the, jumped on the horse and said, you know, because I, I knew we're, it was just the elephant in the room. That's what I said. Elephant in the room is this, and we were like, so shame on me. I should have said, okay, what, what do you think? Now, not that it would have got resolved, solved, because they're clearly coming back, but hopefully we can do, we can take control of how this, how the train goes down the track as opposed to someone else.
Yeah.
And you know what? So we've got a timeline that we've gone, we're working under. If that doesn't meet your needs, we have other options out there. Because their timeline then can change.
Right. It puts a little more urgency in their decision making.
Yep.
Because if they think they got us locked, they're going to be like, well, we're going to.
I'm not trying to leverage them at all, but, but, but also.
We want to move, like we want to get this done.
That's the thing.
But I think the clear point should be when we start to put this together, the pieces together, is that we're looking at all costs, whether it's monetary, opportunity, who fell off chew.
Anybody fall down? No? Okay.
Someone need help?
Okay. All right. So we're going to, so we'll talk about this in a closed session, a little bit more as we're working on that memorandum for whatever it is.
What was, what did you say you were going to bring back for work session?
The memo for.
Understanding.
Understanding. Okay. I would like to make a motion to have a five minute recess. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Did you make that motion?
Five minutes, I did. I need to.
Recording.
All right. I need a motion to, uh, come back into a session?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we're back in. All right. So next up is unfinished business, uh, discussion of town hall meeting agenda. We're, we're having a special meeting on this on Friday, so we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. Um, does anybody have any additions, um, to what is presented?
If I may jump, say something.
You may.
Based on what I am seeing so far, like responses that we're getting to our online posts about the event, I have, let's see, I have eight confirmed people coming, actually nine people confirmed to be coming, three that are interested, some of which are board members. I think that if, uh, I think that if we are, if, if we want to get more exposure for the event, we should invest a little bit of money into advertising the event on Facebook.
Okay.
At least for the next week.
I, I, I'm all in for that because I'm interested in the 800 people that sign a petition off of, God knows what kind of information they were, that was shoved down their throat. So I would be more than willing, because I'm disappointed in the eight from the 800.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm fine with it.
I have to agree with you there.
I would, I would say we'll authorize the clerk to, uh, not, to advertise on Facebook not to exceed.
About a hundred.
Not so much for the event.
Yes. How much?
I mean, it'll only be like a hundred for a week.
Okay.
Yeah, give me, give me a hundred bucks.
Okay, not to exceed a hundred dollars.
Sub moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, perfect, okay. So, does anybody have any changes or anything pressing, because we are, we are having a special meeting on Friday, so is there anything you guys really want to like, that's just urgent that you want to be like, oh, before you forget, or can we really talk about this on Friday? Do you have anything?
I would just note that the times are estimates.
Okay.
Just put an asterisk somewhere, because y'all don't want somebody to say with this, the village hall discussion wasn't to occur until seven twenty-five.
Asterisk at the times or something.
Yeah, they're just time estimates.
Times may be your better place for estimating a schedule.
Okay, alright, okay, so we're gonna, so we'll meet, we're meeting at ten o'clock on Friday here, D here, B square. Alright, next up is.
How long do you think that will be, Kim, on Friday?
Well, Joe, if you don't talk a lot, then probably not very long, it just depends on how long you want to talk.
I can hear you.
Um, I, I mean, I'd say like an hour, maybe an hour and a half.
Talk about this tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
You guys, hour, hour and a half, let's try to be very succinct.
I'll do my best.
Alright, consider, okay, ups and up next, number two is consider adoption of resolution two oh two oh nine oh two amending the village's defense policy, this is Christina, didn't we do this last time?
We did, and y'all already looked at it and we had said we were going to put on the consent agenda, but y'all just wanted to make sure you have the right to reserve any questions while Chaplin is here.
Oh, okay, okay.
If there's no changes that have been made, no questions for Chaplin, you've already seen this once at least.
Okay. I ha, I have no questions.
It's all good from here in?
Yeah, yeah, we, we just really made some clarification after going through it, string monitor a little bit.
Okay. Alright, so I need a motion to adopt the resolution two oh two oh nine oh two amending the village's defense policy.
Sub moved.
Alls in, uh, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next up is consider acceptance of curb gutter and stormwater assessment and direct staff to solicit bids for all of the village system identified failures. Are they, oh, okay, Christina, go ahead.
So, I know y'all are probably tired of hearing about this and, and Rose, but, um, so this is.
No idea.
This is super important, this item and the next item is super important from, from the staff level to plan, you know, effectively over the next several years, but this is a hundred percent of the curb and gutter as we've identified by the recent assessment. Basically, it's somewhere in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range, we have what, we have that money budgeted, I don't think we have the exact numbers budgeted in the right line item, so we might have to do a budget amendment for it, but I'm basically asking you guys if you're ready to move forward with the curb and gutter as presented in the assessment. Um, you know, it's really hard to see in your agenda packet, which is why I provided a large copy. Well, I thought I had.
Yeah, it's right here.
This is in the packet, though?
Yeah, it's in the packet. Okay. Um, that basically says that, um, the curb is right at forty thousand dollars and gutter is sixty eight hundred, so we would move forward with that, we do have to solicit bids for that.
These are all in subdivision streets?
They're all Village of Marvin streets, yeah. I can't tell you they're all for sure subdivisions without looking at it, but, um.
They are not all Village of Marvin streets.
The green ones are, yellow ones are state.
We're only addressing Village of Marvin.
All in green, okay. When, when, when are we, when do we want to, um, do this for?
This year, this fiscal year.
This, okay, so not in like the next couple of months?
Well, what I would do is tell Mike tomorrow that y'all have approved it if, if that's what happens, and he would have to go out and solicit some, you know, bids for that.
Can we, can we approve it with reserving the right to amend the list?
Yeah, I mean, y'all still have to approve the contract for wherever we, we award it to, so we can take stuff out of the contract if needed.
Is that even possible?
Okay, huh?
We've got work to do in Tullmore, how's that even possible? It's a brand new subdivision.
So, so is the preserve.
Should have been, I mean.
The preserve is on here.
It's.
Yep. Um, okay, I mean, I'm fine approving this list as long as we can amend it, um, before we.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll, you'll see the contract.
Okay, alright, anybody have any questions on that? Alright, so I need a.
What?
You do or you don't?
I don't.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept curb gutter and stormwater assessment and direct staff to solicit bids for all of the village system identified failures.
Sub moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Who made that motion?
Uh, Andy's moved it.
Thank you.
Uh, consider acceptance of Village of Marvin roadway assessment plan and direct staff to plan accordingly, Christina.
So, this is super important for planning. Um, basically, what we have identified in the pavement condition survey that was conducted last year is, um, AMT recommends just fog seal of all DOT, all non-DOT roads, so all of our Village of Marvin roads, they're recommending a fog seal. And if you see in the agenda packets, the, um, fog seal would start in twenty-two, twenty-three, estimated at a hundred and nine thousand dollars, and it would be every other year after that for the next ten years roughly. So, in a nutshell, this boils down to about five hundred thousand dollars that would be expended over the next ten years in preventative maintenance. This does not include any emergency repair, any potholes, anything like that that may come up, doesn't include any curb and gutter, doesn't include any stormwater, none of that stuff, and so what I've tentatively done is estimated about fifty thousand dollars every other year to, you know, have some level of pothole repair, you know, emergency repair, and so basically that leaves us with around five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in money that we could put into greenways or other things that would be allowed.
Coming from talent of funds.
Yes, or we can actually move some.
And this is all the stuff we talked about last.
Yeah.
So, this is just, there, there's no real action that's needed as far as, we're not going to go ahead and do a fog seal agreement now, I just want to make sure y'all are okay with conceptually moving forward with this type of preventative maintenance.
And so that you can start budgeting for it appropriately.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, so this, so again, this list can change, like, we're not, like, if something happens and.
Yeah, we still need to do assessments every three to five years as our road resurfacing schedule.
So, this list is just, it is a tentative list?
That's correct, okay.
This just keeps the road as maintained.
So, we don't have to.
What's, what is the, like, how much better is it to do the fog seal?
Apparently a lot better for AMT. Even like just letting it go and then just milling it and repaving it, apparently it's.
It's significant, I mean, if you don't, if you don't do the preventive, it, I mean, he gave a big chart of it, of how it just.
We got a forty-five minute presentation you missed.
It preserves the life of it, the main thing is preventing the water from going into the substrate, and so I don't know the exact number off the top of my head of how many years it extends it, but the, the main part of preventative maintenance is to extend the life of that asphalt, to, you know.
I'll go, I'll go to Shannon and get my forty-five minutes spiel from him, he can break it down for me, I'm sure.
So, I've also included the DOT standards, or not standards, but the plan in year, and they don't expect DOT to come back and start repaving anything until twenty, between twenty-three and twenty twenty-five, so we've just kind of earmarked twenty twenty-five, and those numbers are here, but again, those should be all DOT costs with the exception of some minor costs that we have tentatively said we would pay. Now, we don't have any legal binding agreement or anything, but, um, it looks like AMT has estimated us to pay about twelve thousand dollars in year twenty twenty-five, and then about eight thousand dollars in year twenty.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, so that being said, if that takes place, these are when the DOT roads would, would happen, and that would be our obligation, again, that's all tentative, we can make some communication, as you had mentioned.
Yeah, I even wrote it here, me blurbs about roads to go out to the village, that DOT is not paving, we are not taking over roads, because when they, when they see the fog seal come out to Carrot Hill Creek and people are going to lose their minds, their roads haven't been paved yet, so we need to get, get in front of that.
We won't do the fog seal until next year more than last.
I know, I'm just saying, like, we.
But we can send something out based on these assumptions.
Yes.
But if y'all are okay with that, just want to kind of head on that you guys are good with the fog seal preventative.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
You guys good? Nod your head yes, don't speak, just yes. Alright, great, alright, uh, next up, discussion and consideration of referendum education plan, Christina.
So, at the last, kept commenting, um, I was advised to put together some educational material, uh, which is included in your agenda packet at the time of publication, I had not had a response back from the attorney, so what you see in the published agenda packet is, is not accurate, I fasted out the agenda, I'm sorry, the attorney reviewed version at your desks, and also I emailed it to you, so, uh, no pending questions on it, I'm asking for approval on this information that was presented, that the attorney has reviewed and approved.
Um, I don't have any questions, um, but I think, Joe, it was you who said, we need to make sure that we can put this out, because we can't use public funds, so good job thinking of that.
That was my only concern, is, is there, is, there's a, I forget, my mic's not working today, but there was a clause where you can't use public funds for any kind of campaigning type stuff, so.
And you, and you, and you were right, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, that's why it has to be neutral, you can, you can educate, which is, which is what y'all are doing, but you can't promote one way or the other.
And I can go out on election day and say check yes and yes.
Individually.
Right.
Yes, I mean, you're, you're just not using public funds, so you can't use public funds to.
Yeah.
Pick one side or the other.
We couldn't use, we couldn't use our website and, and say that, uh, you know, like, we put out a statement saying I'm in favor of managing this with against things.
No, but we could put this out, what Chaplin did, but we can't.
This email, right, like we've been doing?
Huh?
It can be sent out as an email like we have been doing, correct?
Yeah, this can, the, what Chaplin approved can, but us saying we're, the council, the majority of councils in favor of that, we cannot put that out.
Oh, can and, oh, one way or another.
No, correct. Yep, okay, so is everybody good with what Chaplin approved? I am.
Yeah, I am, that looks good.
Alright, so I need a motion to approve the referendum education plan as presented by village attorney, the village attorney.
Sub moved.
Alls, uh, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so I'd say, let's start getting that out ASAP.
I need to file.
Next up, discussion and consideration of annexation plan, Rohit.
Okay, um, uh, I had mentioned that, oh, hold on. Okay, so I, I meant to have the materials for this by today, we're a few days behind on that though, um, but I do expect to have the materials, uh, at least some of them by your, uh, eleventh meeting, and, uh, the full package of materials by the fifteenth, so, um.
Okay, yeah, so we, so we could look at them at that organizational meeting, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just coming on the way up.
Cool, okay, alright, uh, anybody have any questions about that, so we're really going to talk about it Friday and then more in depth at the work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Review it later.
Alright, uh, next up is discussion of village center strategic.
Are, are, we're putting out to what date?
It's going to be on the eleventh, um, on Friday, when we're going over the town hall meeting, because we're going to talk about the annexation plan in the town hall meeting, so we'll talk about it on the eleven.
Okay, so we're okay with it, it's listed?
Yep, yep. Um, okay, next up, discussion of village center district strategic plan committee with Union County Planner Emma Lane.
Okay, great, so Emma is here today, uh, she's, uh, gladly, uh, accepted, uh, well, she's, she's, I, I, I called her to see if she would be interested in facilitating this committee, um, because she has experience in historic preservation and architecture and downtown development, and she was gladly willing to, um, that role would, uh, mostly be about making sure the topics, um, have all the correct, you know, material and that we touch everything through the course of the eight, uh, months, and, uh, that she would kind of facilitate, moderate the discussion, whereas I would do, I would do the legwork of, you know, getting the materials between this meeting, which is the first week of the month, and the planning board meeting, which is the third week of the month, and then the next meeting, which is, you know, each, each meeting will have two weeks in between, so I'll be doing the legwork, but, uh, she'll be helping out, uh, you know, one day a week with this meeting, and then another day a week, I mean, another day a month, sorry, one month, one day a month with the meeting, and then one day a month to, like, prepare for the next meeting, basically, so, um, I've invited her here to, um, to just introduce herself, um, to you, and you can ask her some questions, um, about, you know, you know, her experience and, you know, what she thinks about the committee.
Okay, when is the committee, when, when are you guys starting, your meetings?
First meeting will be October first, six, uh, we're going to start at seven for a few months, and then, uh, bring it back down to, um, six thirty. Uh, but yeah, so first meeting will be, and I haven't advertised this yet, uh, we just, we still have yet to confirm it, but October first, seven PM, first meeting.
What if someone's phone was vibrating?
I don't, it's not mine, but it's, it's annoying.
Something is the microphone.
No way, it doesn't, it can't, can't be.
Something's vibrating.
It's not me.
Okay. Alright, okay, alright, so, alright, thank you Rohit, Emma, thank you for joining us, we appreciate it, um, if you want to maybe just kind of give us a quick little blurb about your background, then, uh, that'd be awesome.
Sure, yeah, um, I'm super happy to be here, um, I apologize, my camera is not working, otherwise I'd love, would feel more connected to you guys, um, but I have been working with the county for almost a year in planning, but my, uh, degree, my master's degree in historic preservation, um, and I've worked in two cities in Colorado doing historic preservation, and one of those, uh, cities was, uh, my main project, the thing that I, I really liked to do was a downtown district, and so it was the first commercial historic district that we had done, um, for the town, and also the first for me, and it was really great, we got to do a lot of design guidelines, a lot of, uh, working with businesses and stuff, so it, it's something that I really enjoy, and I think that Marvin is the perfect place, uh, it needs a great downtown, and, uh, I mean, all the discussion that you guys have had today has really been great for me to see, and it really was ripe for something to happen, so I'm super excited to be here for that.
Great, we're excited, we're excited to have you helping us, and, um, we really are looking forward to, to your expertise to, to help us out, because none of us have ever done it, so we're excited.
Emma, what towns in Colorado?
Um, the one that I did that is Brighton, um, it's just northeast of Denver, and then the upper is Aurora, uh, which is just straight east of Denver.
Very good, alright, anybody else have any questions for Emma?
No, welcome and thanks so much, we appreciate that, look forward to it.
Thank you.
Alright, good. Do you have anything else for that one?
Yeah, so we have a motion to appoint her as.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we surely can, um, I'd like to make a motion, or, yeah, like, I like to make a motion to, um, appoint Emma Lane as the strategic plan committee facilitator.
Facilitator.
Perfect.
Sub moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
Excellent.
Emma, we're really looking forward to having you in Union County involved in, in your expertise, so, uh, thank you for stepping up for us.
Absolutely.
Of course, I'm, still looking forward to it, it'll be great.
Anything else on that one for you Rohit?
Um, oh, uh, no, no, we have another, never mind, yeah, that's it, that's it for this one.
Alright, great, uh, next up, consider approval of resolution two zero two zero oh nine oh one, a resolution to accept all roads in the courtyards of Marvin subdivision, uh, and full bond release phase one B and two, and partial bond release of one A to leave eighteen seventy, one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars remaining for tree plans, Rohit.
Alright, so at the work session, if you recall, I had presented a, uh, full bond release, but then it came up that, uh, the berm, we're about ten to fifteen trees short, um, of being ninety-five percent screened, and so with that, I talked to the developer, they said, okay, they recognized that, uh, being shown the, uh, the construction document, which for an, an individual conditional district is the zoning regulation, so if the construction document says something, that's basically law. Uh, so, since they didn't have ninety-five percent screening on this berm, uh, I calculated, um, how many trees they'd need, how much they cost, and, uh, time and a quarter for a contingency, and came up with eighteen seventy-five, and so they accepted that amount, And so they accepted that amount, and so today I'm presenting a full bond release of 1B and 2, and a partial bond release of 1A of the amount minus eighteen seventy-five.
And we're sure eighteen seventy-five's enough?
It's, it should be more than enough.
Okay.
Because I incorporated some contingency.
Great.
And this also is an item to consider, the resolution to accept the roads in the subdivision, which our engineer found to be acceptable.
Okay, okay, all right. Do we have any questions for Rohit? Nope, okay. All right, so I'd like to make a, or I'd like to get a motion to approve Resolution RS 2020-0901, resolution to accept all roads in the courtyards at Marvin subdivision and full bond releases of phase 1B and 2.
The resolution is just for the streets, sorry, it should be two different motions.
It's two motions.
We need like a 1 and 2 when we have them jammed in there together?
Uh, sure.
That'd be great, okay. I need a motion to approve RS 2020-0901, resolution to accept all roads in the courtyards at Marvin subdivision.
Sub move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion to perform a full bond release of phase 1B and 2, and partial bond release of phase 1A to leave eighteen seventy-five remaining for additional tree plantings at the courtyards at Marvin subdivision.
Sub move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, all right, awesome, thank you. Next up is discussion and consideration of verbiage for memorial plaques for families of former mayors Don Carr and Nick Dispenzie, Austin.
Okay, so I don't have proclamations ready yet, which you were previously requested. I should have those at the work session. The verbiage you have in your packet, something I quickly threw together. Don Carr has a nice long quote after his, because that is a quote that has been publicly identified the biggest favorite. We can choose to include that in some form on the plaque or not. Just let me know, what do you think about this verbiage? Would you like to change it? I don't know if any of you personally know the Carr family, but.
I mean, I like it, we just need to capitalize "mayor" in the first sentence.
Took my packet here.
Besides that, I like, I like it, I think it's nice. Have we talked to his family? No, I would, I, maybe we could, just, you know, let them know that we're trying to do something nice. And Joe, can you mute your thingy? You are so loud, I don't know what you're doing.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at two papers, I don't have this, but that, oh, there it is, okay, I finally found it.
All right, thanks, 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 Loudy.
I'll try to find some contact information.
Yeah, I mean, I know his daughter's Paulette Carr, so, but just, you know, check in and see, you know, just let them know that we're trying to do something nice. And I would also reach out to Nick's wife, just let her know, see if maybe there's like, he has a favorite quote, or if, you know, he, you know, has, you know, said something nice about the village that she would want to include, or. But I think this is a great start, so we'll see what else we can come up with, and then bring it back to the work session.
Yeah, it is part of the spark.
Yep. Anything else for that one? Nope, okay.
No.
All right, so we're good to just direct Austin to keep working?
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion on that.
All right, great, thank you. Next up is the Park Trek and Greenway Roundabout Plans, I will try to be quick. We had a meeting this afternoon with Park Trek and Greenway. We also had DOT road.
The landscaping guy.
The landscaping guy, he was lovely. So, okay, so we're gonna start in kind of in the middle of the page, you guys don't have this. Yeah, can you hold it up? So anyway, so we're gonna start here, okay? See where I'm pointing? Don't say anything, just nod your heads. Okay, so right in the middle is B. B is a monument, we can't have monuments, we're not allowed to have monuments, okay? So we are going to, if you look kind of at the bottom right-hand corner, we're going to do a red bud tree, it's a lovely tree, it's hot pink, and it turns green, and it's lovely. Around that, yeah, where A is going to be, those are gonna be dwarf Buford holly shrubs, and we're gonna kind of make it like a circle around the tree. Then G will still be mulch, all around there. F, we have, we, Park Trek and Greenway is recommending to do giant river rocks, like the big ones, not the little pebbles, but the giant ones, instead of doing turf for maintenance purposes. Now, if you go down to the, can they still see that?
Yeah, they can see it.
If you go down to this section here, here, D is going to be, what's D gonna be?
Grass.
The mully grass in pink. C is gonna be the Laura petalum.
Lorpetum.
Do that, dwarf pink jazz hands, it's a Chinese fringe flower. D, already did D, or C, E is gonna be the hardy lantana Chapel Hill pink huff. If we can't find the pink huff, we're gonna do plain Chapel Hill. So what I need from you guys is to approve this, or make any changes as you see fit. And then we need to direct Rohit to submit these plans to Bruce, who is the DOT guy here. Our plan is to chop the top off of the muffin that are the roundabouts, you know, because it's really pumped over, so we need to make it flatter, so we're gonna.
Chop the top off the muffin.
Right, chop the top off the muffin.
That's a great way to say that, isn't it?
I'm telling you, son.
I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a great visual, right?
Just rip off that muffin.
Right, take off the muffin top. And then, and then once Rohit submits that, we can then have Derek start putting out bids for contracts.
My only interjection, and I said this to Derek when we were talking the other day, I hate the idea of the rock, I'd much rather have turf, but I probably am overruled at this point. But I like the contrast, the green, it looks much nicer and cleaner. And quite frankly, it's not a whole lot to maintain. And if we use a warm season grass, it doesn't necessarily have to be watered either. It's just brown in the winter, but it's nice green and doesn't need much water.
So we came up with grass options in case somebody didn't like the river rocks. And we came up with zoiza?
Zoija.
Which is that one, or centipede?
Or cen- centipede?
Yep, that was what DOT Bruce said.
Yeah, DOT, no, centipede doesn't grow here, it grows in the sand down east.
Okay.
We planted like billions of.
Zoiza, whatever.
Zoija, yeah, I've actually planted it in my backyard.
Okay.
It's a very hardy, low-growing, very nice, soft, like you would like to lay in it, it's green, it's really nice.
So it's really, I mean, if that's our only contention, I don't really care either way. I think the, I think the green would look lovely, I think the river rock's gonna be a lot less maintenance, it'll help with drainage, but I'm, I'm, I can go either way, somebody can sway me.
Actually, grass is better for drainage because of.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Because it absorbs.
It absorbs it, it doesn't run on it.
Well, then, then, I mean, again, somebody can sway me, I don't, that doesn't, that's not gonna be my thing.
I just don't want, I just don't want the maintenance of.
The grass.
The grass.
Yeah.
Maintenance in the rock too.
Cut.
Well, there's maintenance in the rock too, you gotta keep the wind out of it and all that, so. The amount of grass that's there is, it's negligible, it's 10 minutes.
And again, I'm not a landscaper or anything like that, so I'm like, I'm like Kim, I can be swayed any way. I was the one that went and talked about the rock, because again, I'm just trying to keep.
Keep it simple.
Well, we can't get the, can't get the mowers out there, oh, we can't get this out there.
I mean, I don't know.
I'm fine with it either way.
It's a very, it's narrow, it creates a nice contrast, from a landscaper, it creates a nice contrast in the look from a maintenance standpoint. If you're using zoija, it's only, you're only mowing about, I don't know, seven months of the year or so. You're not, you don't mow in the wintertime and that stuff, so it's pretty easy. And there's not a whole lot to it, it literally would take them about 10 minutes to cut it. It's just not, it's not much.
The, the thing I wanted to point out before we get crazy on doing the muffin top cutting and stuff. It's a natural slope, Aaron, and my thought was, as you showed those layers, and if there were, trying to create different colors, you can actually drive in without anything growing tall, the different levels can be each level, whatever we're planting, if they're different flowers or whatever, you can see them because of that slope. If you cut that slope off, then you're almost creating a situation where you have to have higher things in the back, which is what we don't really want to get to, so I'd just be conscious before we said, okay, chop that down.
Well, two, two things, Joe, we, we're gonna have to take off some of the muffin top because it's bad dirt, and you're not gonna be able to grow anything, so we've got, we're gonna have to cut some off and bring some good dirt in, but we also pick stuff that is like by height already.
It's tiered so that you can see it.
It's tiered anyway.
Yeah, and.
And DOT wants it flattened too.
Trust me, they talked about this in the.
You don't want it, and to Joe's point, and I think we can all understand this, is that we don't want it completely flat, because you don't have good drainage.
Oh, agreed.
So you have a little bit of a.
Of course, yes.
But not as pronounced as what we have now.
Right, right, I mean, DOT is like, you guys have to take it down some, like.
Well, DOT is the one who put it in there.
I'm, I'm just relaying the.
DOT put it in there when it was just a mound.
Yeah, and not things.
When we use them monuments, do they all allow them, that's the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's DOT.
So that changes if we own that?
Yes.
Okay.
That took care of that.
Yep, all right, so.
Yep, I agree, what I'm concerned about was the drainage, that, you know, if it's cut too flat, you know, water would gather and such, but if there's a little bit tilt, you know, they're liking a little bit more of a three-dimensional look, like Joe was talking about, so, you know.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, it will, it will have some, it won't be like flat-flat, it will have some contour. What, where are you guys with grass versus stone?
I, I actually prefer probably the grass.
Joe?
That looks cleaner, and, and, I mean, it's gonna require maintenance from the standpoint of fertilization seeding and stuff like that, but, you know, keep it nice, nothing's worse than a bad-looking, weedy-looking lawn, but as long as it's kept up, you know, it's just a small patch.
Joe?
I'm the grass man.
I know a grass man.
You're so weird. All right, well, then we got three grasses to two stones, but I could easily be swayed, so we'll go grass.
Stone reminds me of Arizona, and I love.
Zoija, zoija?
Zoija.
Whatever.
All right, let's move to get this to Derek.
Yeah, okay, so I need a motion to approve the Park Trek and Greenway Roundabout Planting Plan with the.
Zoija.
Zoija grass instead of the river rock for F. And direct Rohit to submit this plan to Bruce with all of the specifications with the muffin top, et cetera, all these plantings, and also then direct Derek to go ahead and put this out for bid.
Sub move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, fantastic, good job, thanks, everybody, motion passes. Next up, new business, adopt general fund budget ordinance. OR 2020-0902, ordinance amending the general budget ordinance, that is the worst title ever. Okay, Christine?
So, yeah, that is a bad title.
Amending the general, yeah.
Basically, we're taking some money out of contingency, we put it into office, we had purchased, you know, the banners, presentation material that we're gonna purchase for the town hall day. And the lighter gun also included, that was supposed to be included in this ordinance, was the increase of law enforcement for salaries as we went up in our rates. However, we were able to work out a deal where we reduced the hours and increased the salary, so it was a net watch. So I can't tell you that that's gonna happen next year, but we did it this year, and we saved $20,000 doing it that way. So fingers crossed we do it again, so that's basically taking our contingency down to $32,000.
All right, good job on that.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Same, I mean.
So I need a motion to adopt the general fund budget ordinance OR 2020-0902?
Sub move.
All's in favor, or further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, all right, next up, consideration of applicants to Village Center Strategic, Village Center District Strategic Plan Committee and consideration of expanding committee from 7 to 9. Okay, this is Austin, Austin, how many do we have right now?
We have eight applicants.
No, no, how many have we?
You've approved five, you should have three more applications in your packet. And that would leave one vacant, so we had a higher.
Three.
Three.
If we, why do we want to go from 7 to 9? Because you don't want even numbers if there's split votes?
Yeah, because there's no like tiebreaker person.
Do, here's what I don't want to have happen, is that you've got, we appoint eight people, and we never get the ninth person, or we get the ninth person in December before we have.
I know that two people have told me that they're going to submit applications. I mean, that puts us at 10 people, but, I mean, this could, this could be cut off at some point. You could just not increase to nine and then pick two of these three people. But, but just to, just to be, you know, kind to these people who applied, knowing that there may be another one or two applications, that's why we also propose the possibility of increasing the members to nine.
I would definitely cap it off there, since.
Right, no more than nine.
Because too many people in one room.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, what do you guys think?
I mean, the more the merrier, but to a cap, I mean, I think that the more input you get, the better.
Okay, so if we, so if we don't have nine people by October 1st, go day.
We'll still go, yeah.
Because you had said you didn't want to start without full, so then you're not catching people up. Okay, I mean, if you want, if you want nine, I'm good with nine. So do you need a motion to increase to nine?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I need the motion to expand the Village Center Strategic Plan Committee from seven members to nine members?
Sub move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, and then I'm good with approving these three candidates here. Do you want individuals' names, or just do all three in one? All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the applicants as presented in the agenda packet to the Village Center Strategic Plan Committee.
Sub move.
Further discussions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have two names for the record, or?
Yeah, I would.
No, it's just the people in the packet. It would be Michael Lovell, Michael Lovell, Sherry Carletti Albano, Albano, and William Owens.
The only reason I think that's important is because the packets are not kept indefinitely.
No, no, that's fine, yeah, I got it, okay. Um.
Thanks, Austin.
Thank you, Austin.
Got her before me, so she didn't yell at me.
Hey. I did, you took one for, for the team, Joe appreciates that. Okay, next up, number three, consideration of applicant to Park Trek and Greenway Ward for term expiring 9/1/2021, this would, this would be Sherry Carletti Albano. I'm great with appointing her. Anybody got any questions, concerns, statements?
No.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve Sherry Carletti Albano to the Parks Recreation and Greenway Board for the term expiring 9/1/21.
Sub move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Who made that motion?
Uh, who sub moved that?
I did.
Jamie did, all right. Next up is discussion and consideration of Barcroft Final Flat Revision to Add Natural Conservation Areas as Tree Mitigation. Now, if you're in your packets, mine was in my unfinished business side, so if you're looking for it.
Maybe I put that in there in the wrong spot, my apologies.
That's okay, I'm just saying, if you're looking for it, it's not in.
Well, this, just so you guys know, before Rohit takes it, Rohit asked me to sign it. This is really, and no big deal, Rohit, you can get into that. But because it was the potential property that we were discussing, or development, and we were discussing that, was talking about potential rental, doing the rentals and stuff, I just thought it made sense to kick it back to you guys to make sure that we're crossing our t's and dotting our i's on that, but nothing really, Billy and Rohit, I'll let you go ahead and explain what I was trying to explain.
Okay, so for this subdivision, Bill Smith and I and the developers, we kicked this around for about like two months. Since they ran out of room, they save, they conserve so much room that they ran out of room to plant trees, additional trees, and finally, we put it in an ordinance, we found an ordinance that stated that areas, basically, they don't have to conserve. that areas, basically, they don't have to conserve, but they do, um, plat as permanent conservation can be counted towards mitigation for all the trees that are greater than six inches, uh, in diameter. Um, so that said, Bill Smith did do a calculation of the areas that we thought they could save, uh, in addition to what they already said they were gonna save, which is like thirty-plus percent of the tract. Um, and then found that there were enough trees in that, in those areas, and there are, um, several areas marked as natural conservation, um, that there were enough trees in those areas to count towards the required, um, mitigation of six hundred or so trees.
And, and Bill Smith being his title?
He's the, the county urban forester, and we contract him to do, um, pretty much all of our, uh, tree-related ordinance interpretation and inspections.
Thank you. So it's been reviewed by someone who looks at this stuff all the time that we've hired, and it's, we're just making sure that I'm not just doing something on my own, or doing it, you know, making sure that we just kick it back to you guys.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
So if that looks good to you, um, we could do it, I think-
Need a motion probably for me to go ahead and, uh, move forward with signing that document on the plat.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion to have Mr. Mayor sign the final plat revision to add natural conservation areas as tree mitigation?
Sounds good.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion passes, alright, next up, open topics. Okay, no open topics, next up, agenda items, review of action items and ongoing action item list.
Okay, so let's see. Okay, so, let's see, Christina will provide an update on manholes and firethorn at the September work session. I will email the deputies report to you all. Mason, I'll get up with you, I need to, I probably need that report a little sooner so I can get it in their packets. Well, I made it for future meetings, but I'll get up with you on that. Rohit will provide counsel with more information on the public's, uh, grand opening day before, okay. Uh, Rohit will, hold on one second. Rohit will bring the road resurfacing ordinance, Village Center Timeline and Language Plan to the work session and place on the agenda. Um, Christina will revise contract with Urban Architects not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and consult with Chaplain. I will place asterisks on the town hall meeting agenda to show that those are time estimates, not requirements. I'll publish the education plan, I will reach out to, um, the car and dispensary families, uh, I will contact the new applicants, I'll send them letters, and Mr. Mayor will sign off on that plat revision. Did I miss anything?
And he'll sign all your minutes you need done.
Yeah, sign my minutes.
Just nod your head, don't speak, just nod your head.
He's muted.
Yep. Mute him back!
I just wanna be sure I'm feeling good.
That's fine, that's fine, don't, don't, don't get a cigarette.
Yeah, don't, yeah, okay, alright, anything else?
I think that's it, unless you, unless I've missed anything, Christine?
Christine, you got anything? Okay, um, alright, so the, the, uh, ongoing action item list, uh, we're working on the voluntary annexation tree planting list.
That is still in progress, Bill Smith is, uh, very behind on pro- projects cause he moved and he's basically working remotely four days a week, so.
From Greensboro, right?
Yeah, from Greensboro.
Alright, dwellings ordinance revision.
That's also gonna be part of the, uh, the overhaul of the ordinance, which I'm still reviewing.
Alright, uh, so let's just change that May twenty-eighth discussion, let's just take that off there. Uh, we have voluntary annexation plan on here, boys, so let's, yeah, let's just-
The voluntary annexation, voluntary annexation.
Yeah, let's just combine those two. Uh, Park Trek and Greenway, we should've asked John about it. Can, who does the Park Trek and Greenway agenda?
Me and Derek.
Can you, can you make a note to add to their, our next agenda, to ask him?
Add to who's next agenda?
Park Trek and Greenway, to ask John Bericich for their voluntary annexation ad information. Probably by this point, we've already got it together, so we probably don't even need it, take it off, never mind, just take it off.
Take it off, okay.
Sorry, um, discussion of communication plan, where are we with that, Christina, have we done it? Is it a policy?
We have, we have it.
It's a policy?
It is, we just haven't-
We're, we're, it's a work in progress, whenever we have time.
Okay, roundabout lighting.
Uh, no update.
Rohit? Can we get a Rohit at the work session, I mean, a Rohit, can we get our update at the work session?
Trust me, Rohit will be at the work session.
Sorry, alright, it's only nine, ten, I'm doing pretty good, it's not even that late, so can we get an update then? Okay, uh, village hall renderings, okay, that's in progress.
So wait, we're doing roundabout lighting at the work session?
I'm gonna get an update.
Yeah. Sign plan and HOA cost sharing, where are we there, anybody else said, yeah, we're in? No, okay, uh, where are we with DOT, no left turn?
They said, they said they were remevolto it.
Okay, good, are they gonna give it to us, or do we have to pay for it?
Well, I mean, oh, this is gonna be assigned.
Great, when are we gonna get it?
We'll have to pay for it.
Okay.
You don't wanna do it?
Yeah.
So I'll check that out.
Yeah, during, during high-traffic time, absolutely.
Four-thirty to seven-thirty, giddy up.
I'll get Mason something else for him.
Yeah!
With his new lighter gun.
Chase people around.
Citizen's arrest.
Citizen's arrest, yes, citizen's arrest.
Planted board and PR and G photos for emails, Austin.
We're in a pandemic, I can send out an email to see if people wanna send me their own photo, shoot photos, but I ain't getting them together in a room for a while.
Alright, roundabout landscape, we can say complete for that, since we've done that, cause we're just gonna use same plantings for the next, for all the roundabouts, right? Make them look uniform.
That was my understanding.
Okay, traffic calming policy, work session, proclamations are in progress, town hall, you guys are working on that, we should have that by the, we, we, I mean, we should have some images by Friday, maybe?
Fridays, they're gonna, we won't have one by Friday, cause we have, the website committee has their final meeting.
Okay. Uh, annexa-, another annexation plan on here, let's take that one off.
That was making sure it's complete by Friday, but, yeah, that's definitely going off.
Uh, pursued federal grants, Rohit, you're still working on that?
Yeah, I was talking to Bjorn about that.
Awesome, village hall, Christina, that's in progress, draft list of uses for village hall, Rohit, you're working on that, okay. Awesome, great job, everybody, uh, council comments. You have thirty seconds each.
I'll go, I'll go first.
Okay, Bob, thirty seconds, ready, go.
I wanna thank the staff for the great job that they continue to do, uh, you know, special kudos to you, Austin, you're really cutting your teeth, you know, on everything, and you're doing, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm really proud, again, as I mentioned this at the last meeting at the work session, I'm really proud of the progress we're making, you know, together as a group, as council, representing the citizens, with everything we're doing towards, going towards this town hall, um, as well as the Heritage District. You know, we're doing a lot of things, I've heard it from people, neighbors, and they're saying, wow, we see these agendas coming out. I, I wanna implore to the, to the citizens of Marvin that, a little concerning that there's only eight people signed up so far to come to something that's so very important, uh, you know, that you need to have a say in, and, uh, you know, we don't need anybody to be surprised when we're trying to make decisions on behalf of the village of Marvin. And, you know, there are, there are property owners involved, they're wanting to drive this, and, uh, you know, I just implore that we get, you know, come out, take a look, it's, it's gonna be quite entertaining, so, um, just to, to pass that on.
Alright, thank you, Bob, uh, Joe?
Let me get the timer.
Thirty seconds?
Go!
Thank you, staff, thank, thanks, thank you for all your hard work, Austin, you're doing a great job, appreciate all your, uh, your work efforts, and Christina, you, you as well, and welcome to the, uh, new, uh, planning person. And, um, I'm trying to, uh, look at, uh, oh, I see, we're still at, it's after nine o'clock, I'm sure I would've finished by nine, just so you know.
Anybody believes that, I got a story to tell you.
No, and, and, and to, Bob, as I could tell, on, uh, kinda co-telling Bob's, to Robert's, uh, points, um, if we don't hear from you, if we don't hear from you and don't see you at this town hall meeting, and we're getting very few people at these, uh, coffee, but council, you know, all we have to look at is really, you know, what our feelings are, how we put this together, and the, uh, survey that we did, so. I, I agree, we have to figure out a way to encourage it, word of mouth, something to get people out there and to participate, and nothing else, learn your history about Marvin, and I think Gene will probably do a very nice job of, uh, presenting that. Um, sorry, I couldn't be there, I just was, wasn't feeling a hundred percent, and then these days, uh, wire is getting, I didn't have my physical, I will say, good news, my blood pressure is dropping, I wonder why? I mean, we have a little more stability in these, uh, town halls. I think I can pin it on that, so thank you for, uh, all of your work, I know we can disagree, but do it respectfully. Um, but, uh, that's all I have, and again, thank you, uh, staff.
Alright, thank you, Joe, Andy?
I'm a man of few words, but thank you to everybody and all their hard work, and, uh, Austin, you did a great job. Christina, of course, you're doing a great job, as you have been, keeping us all together. I'm excited about this, all the work we've been doing, the downtown district and all, and I start to see some things starting to come along, and I'm, I'm really, really happy to see the forward progress, finally, getting some things done, so.
Thank you, Andy. Jamie?
Staff, thanks again, I mean, again, I, I'm, I'm excited about all the things we talked about, and you just, y'all made the comment as we were going into this, this is really good, I mean, it's a lot of good, um, a lot of good stuff. And, and staff, that's a huge kudos to you, to keeping us on track, pushing us along, and, and, and keeping us going with all this, so thank you for all that you do, it does not go unnoticed, certainly on my end. Um, I always will do, give council comments, is thank you to law enforcement. These guys are telling you, these guys and gals in law enforcement, they don't get enough credit for what they do every day, every, all the time. Um, our veterans, thank you. Welcome to Jamie, the new finance person, glad to have her on board. Um, also, congrats on, I heard, uh, the thing about the Eagle Scout, did the project, so congratulations on, I don't know if he's already obtained the Eagle Scout badge, or if he has-
I think he already is.
Alright, well, congratulations, and, and, and I forgot, I'm sorry to jot down his name.
Tristan Ridgeway.
Tristan Ridgeway, congratulations on that, I know it takes a lot of hard work to get that and obtain that, so congratulations to Tristan on that. And also, I, I'm hopeful that, uh, with this marketing of, of, for the town hall, you got me on top of it.
You got way over your target.
That, that we get more attendance, I, I would really, I would really hope that we have a full house there, considering what this council has been through and fought through and done for the constituents. I'd be disappointed if eight people showed up, knowing, and I know full well that there were people to sign the petition, um, off, I guarantee it, I know for a fact that it was based off of, of propaganda and, and bad information. So I'm disappointed in that, but I'm hoping it will pick up, and we have a full house, um, so, so people can talk to us instead of signing some frivolous piece of paper, and, uh, I'm excited for that coming up, so.
I will take in the advertising tomorrow.
Okay, good deal, thanks.
Alright, Jamie, thank you.
Yep.
I have nothing, I, I just reiterate everything everybody said, so, good job, everybody. Um, alright, next up, closed session, I need a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.11A3 to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to protect attorney-client privilege.
And provide instructions for contract terms.
And provide instructions for contract terms.
And, okay, and provide-
Instructions for contract terms.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
About that.
Aye, alright, we will call you- Alright, I'm ready. Okay, I need a motion to come out of closed session and into open session.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, and I need a motion to adjourn the, uh, regular session at ten twenty-five PM.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 alright.
Thirty minutes, then Joe would've done it.
There we go, give me an hour.